The regular meeting of the San Fernando City Council and its successor agency to the San Fernando Redevelopment Agency is called to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mary Solorio. Councilmember Joel Fajardo. Councilmember Cindy Montañez. Vice Mayor Mary Mendoza.
Present.
Mayor Celeste Rodriguez.
Present. Madam City Clerk, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Will everyone please rise? Hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve?
Motion.
To approve.
A second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Solorio. Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez. Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item is decorum in order. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the decorum in order admonition for the San Fernando City Council. The city council elected by the public must be free to discuss issues confronting the city in an orderly environment. Members of the public attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the city council as set forth in the San Fernando procedural manual. Any person making impertinent derogatory or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending a city council meeting, and such conduct is deemed to be disruptive to the proceedings, may be removed if the presiding officer so directs the Sergeant of Arms and such person may be barred further from audience before the city council. And that concludes the English language version of the admonition, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It's Spanish.
Decoro y orden. El consejo municipal elegido por el público debe tomar la libertad de discutir los problemas que enfrenta la ciudad en un entorno ordenado. Los miembros del público que asistan a las reuniones del consejo municipal deberán observar las mismas reglas de orden y decoro aplicables al consejo municipal según el manual de procedimientos de San Fernando. Cualquier persona que se dirija al consejo no debe hacer comentarios personales, impertinentes, difamatorios, o profanos a ningún miembro del consejo, empleados de la ciudad, o el público en general. Cualquier persona que haga tales comentarios despectivos o difamatorios impertinentes, o que se vuelva abusiciosa mientras se dirija al consejo municipal o mientras asiste a la reunión del consejo municipal, puede ser excluida de la sala si el funcionario que preside el consejo así se lo indicara al Sargento de Armas, y dicha persona puede ser excluida de futuras audiencias ante el consejo municipal.
Thank you. Up next is public statements. Madam Deputy Clerk, are there any public statements submitted for this evening?
Yes, thank you. Now is the time for public comments on items on the agenda or other city issues. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If there's anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak, please fill out the blue form located on the table in the council chamber's entrance and submit it to the city clerk. When your name is announced to speak, please walk up to the podium to address the city council. You may voluntarily state your name and address and speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Callers wishing to provide a live public comment, please close your YouTube stream of the city council meeting as there is an approximate eight-second delay and will interfere with the live meeting streaming to YouTube. Again, please close the YouTube stream when calling in, and when it is your turn to speak, you'll be identified by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Lastly, please understand that the city council is unable to respond to questions in order to comply with the public meeting requirements and must refrain from engaging in any dialogue during the public comment period. City staff will have your contact information and will be able to follow up directly with you regarding your question. Now we have the Spanish interpretation.
Comentarios públicos. Este es el momento y lugar para los comentarios públicos para temas de la agenda u otros temas de la ciudad. Habrá un límite de tres minutos por cada miembro de la audiencia que quiera hacer comentarios relacionados con temas de la ciudad. Cualquier persona que desee hablar, por favor, llene el formulario azul que se encuentra en la entrada de la sala del Consejo Municipal y entregárselo a la Secretaria de la Ciudad. Cuando se dirija al Consejo Municipal, por favor, hable al micrófono y voluntariamente diga su nombre y domicilio. Las personas que llamen para dar su comentario en vivo deben cerrar su transmisión de YouTube de la reunión del Consejo Municipal debido a que existe una demora de aproximadamente ocho segundos que interferirá con la transmisión de la reunión en vivo por YouTube. Nuevamente, cierre la transmisión de YouTube cuando llame, y cuando sea su turno para hablar, se le identificará anunciando los últimos cuatro dígitos de su número de teléfono. Por último, por favor comprenda que para cumplir con los requisitos de las reuniones públicas, el Consejo Municipal no puede responder preguntas y debe abstenerse de entablar ningún diálogo durante el periodo de comentarios públicos. El personal de la ciudad tendrá su información de contacto y podrá hacer un seguimiento directamente con usted con respecto a su pregunta. Gracias.
Our first public comment is from Angel Zobo Rodriguez and Nicole Moore.
Hi. So we're here representing the Education Commission. I am the chair of the commission right now, and Angel is the vice chair, so thank you for having us. We wanted to just take a moment to address something that is on your consent calendar, which is the scholarship letter. We are here. We will be here should you need to pull it from consent calendar for any questions. We're here if you have any questions. We hope that it's super clear-cut and that it's just going to go right on through, but should you have any questions, we're here. We also wanted to take this opportunity to invite you to our Principal's Brunch, which is coming up on Friday, January 27th, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM. And we, Mayor Rodriguez has already confirmed that she will be there representing the city council, and she will have about two minutes to speak, but we would love if you could all be there to be introduced to our school administrators that work for the students in the city.
You did a fantastic job.
We're here if you need anything. Thank you.
Our next public comment is through Zoom. I'd be admitting them now. Caller 6406, do you have a public comment?
Happy New Year. This is Charles Leno with SCIU Local 721. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and Vice Mayor Mendoza, and honorable members of the San Fernando City Council. I hope you're able to hear me well. Hope you enjoyed the holiday season, you and your families and friends, however you chose to celebrate. We are optimistic. SFPJA is optimistic for this new year. I just wanted to join tonight's meeting to send you our love, to send you our appreciation, to send you our admiration. We're optimistic that we are going to be able to move closer on MOU negotiations. We're currently at the table, and we ask for your continued support for SFPJA to be able to get an MOU that our members can be proud of. And so with that, we're hoping that you enjoyed yourself for the holidays. Also, a big shout-out to our SFPJA members that helped staff the senior dance for New Year's Eve. We understand that more than 150 seniors were able to come out and participate with those festivities, and it's those vital services that our members continue to enjoy to provide. And so with that, we're optimistic about this new year and what we are able to achieve working together. Thank you so much.
Our last public comment was submitted via email. Hello, my name is Eric Hernandez. He/him, and I am without against Big Tobacco Los Angeles Campaign. We work to protect vulnerable community members from the effects of commercial tobacco, including flavors and vaping. With California's SB 793 taking effect this week, I would like to highlight that the law does not apply to flavored shisha, hookah tobacco products, flavored premium cigars, and flavored loose-leaf pipe tobacco. Research shows that first-time tobacco users who use flavored tobacco products are more likely to become hooked on tobacco products than someone trying non-flavored tobacco products for the first time. Communities of color, low-income communities, and LGBTQ+ youth are more likely to use flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes, potentially increasing the risk of developing long-term health issues, including lung cancer. Please consider this research when working to make San Fernando a healthy community for our youth and the LGBTQ+ community. Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item for discussion?
I'll pull item number one and move to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Okay. Could we get a roll call on the remaining items, Madam Clerk? Oh, I apologize. Has second? Thank you.
Councilmember Solorio.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez. Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. Motion passes. Now we'll consider item one. Councilmember Fajardo, you have the floor.
Yes, with respect to this item, given that I was not on the city council at the time, I know that I am still legally allowed to vote on it. However, I cannot testify to the veracity of it, therefore I would wish to abstain on this item, which is why I pulled it.
Okay. Could we move forward with the roll call vote, please?
We need a motion still and a second for it.
It would just be moved to approve the item.
A motion, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second. Councilmember Solorio.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Abstain.
Councilmember Montañez. Councilmember Montañez. Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is item number five. A public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving amendments to the San Fernando Municipal Code to implement the urban lot splits and two-unit residential development within the single-family residential R1 zone imposed by Senate Bill 9. At this time, the public hearing is open. Mr. City Manager, is there a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Community Development Director Kanika Kith will provide the staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and member of the council. While the city clerk pulled the presentation, I would like to introduce Eric Norris, who's on the screen. He is the contract planner that's been working with us in developing the permit regulation for SB 9. So here's, I'll give you a short presentation. So the proposed project this evening is a proposed ordinance for the council to adopt for urban lot split and two-unit residential development in the R1 zone for implementing SB 9 projects. I'll give you a brief history on that. Senate Bill 9, SB 9, was effective January 1st, 2022, and in early January of last year, the city council adopted an interim urgency ordinance to became, to become effective immediately at that time to allow us to regulate SB 9 project. And then we presented it to the Planning Commission for discussion, but the Planning Commission directed that we, that the commission wanted to work on a permit regulation that would have a more robust regulation. So we came back to council in March 1st for the council to extend the urgency ordinance, and that extension is valid until January 19th of this year, so the 19th of this month. This permit regulation that's being proposed to the council this evening had been to the Planning Commission numerous times. As you can see here, it went into the commission in February, March, April. I think twice in December, twice in November, and then again in December for adoption. Before I talk about the proposed ordinance, I want to talk a little about SB 9. I know you are familiar with it, but I just want to give a brief recap of SB 9. SB 9 is only valid in the R1 zone, and the R1 zone are the single-family zone, and they're shown here in yellow. As you can see, a major part of our residential community are R1 zone. Excuse me. Before SB 9, this is your typical single-family home. You have a main house and a garage. But then the ADU law came in, and now the garage is being converted to ADU and junior ADU. But with SB 9, that one lot is now can be subdivided to two lots. And as you can see, oh, sorry, the pointer doesn't work on the screen. As you can see, the red outline is, could be a kind of illustration of what the new lot can look like, and that would be a typical flag lot where you provide, the long strip is the flag pole, and then the retaining lot is the flag part, so that's why it's called a flag lot. So you could take one retaining lot and subdivide it to two lots. Under SB 9, they're allowed to do two lots, and just that they cannot be smaller than 40% of the original lot size. The minimum lot is then allowed to be at 1,200 square feet, whereas our typical single-family R1 zone lot is at 7,500 square feet. But we have to comply with SB 9, so we have to allow the 1,200 square feet for lot size. And it also modifies our site and rear yard setback to four feet. The second component of SB 9 is what we call the two-unit residential development, in which case, so the two new lots are created can now have two new units each, so a total of four units, and each unit must be at least 800 square feet minimum. So the proposed ordinance that's presented to you this evening will amend our municipal code, and will, it will amend our zoning code to develop standards and regulation for two-unit residential development under our zoning code, and it will also amend our subdivision code to allow the lot split. So here is our proposed ordinance. We have two proportion, two components. So the urban lot split, we are keeping with the state law for allowing the 1,200 square feet minimum. We are modifying the state law about the new lot needs to be 40% of the original lot. Now we're changing that to be ranges from 48 to 50% of the original lot size. It cannot be smaller than 48%, and it cannot be 52%. We're keeping with the state law of allowing the two unit on the new lot. We're keeping with state law for site and rear yard setback. What we're adding here is a 10-foot front yard setback for flag lot. And the reason why it's highlighted here in red, because this is going to be our proposed changes to the proposed ordinance that's presented to you this evening. This was discussed at Planning Commission, and commission wanted to keep that, but it was not included in the proposed ordinance, and it was caught after we published the agenda. The second component of the proposed ordinance this evening is the two-unit residential development. So again, we're keeping with the state law. All the text in black is keeping in line with the state law. The one R in green is what we're changing on state law. So remember, state law requires each unit to be 800 square feet minimum. We're making that a cap. If you want to do SB 9, then your SB 9 unit can only be 800 square feet maximum. The 400 square feet, or 10% of common open space is what we're asking for. And in addition, we're also asking for 150 square feet of private open space. This is also another proposed amendment to the ordinance this evening. That 150 square feet private open space is what we're currently requiring in the R2 zone. So in the R2 zone, it's a zone that allows more than one single-family home. You can get a three, two, or four unit. And if you're going to do a multifamily development, you need to provide 150 square feet of private open space. And this is something that we're including that's not in SB 9, but it's still in compliance. We're also setting the max of 14 feet high, so they can only go one story. They can't go two-story. And we require a building separation of six feet, and the back unit must be screened either by the front unit or landscape, so that it's not visible to the street. And the idea behind that is to maintain the single-family character. So if you're driving through a single-family neighborhood, rather than seeing a multi-development, multi-unit development, it gives the appearance of more of a single-family neighborhood with multiple units behind it. So all these regulations are put in place, but we also have to keep in mind that if there's a situation where they cannot accommodate two 800 units on one lot, we have to waive some of these requirements in order for them to develop two 100-square-foot unit on each lot. So here is just a screenshot of the proposed changes of that requesting being amended to the proposed ordinance to you this evening. That is in the zoning code section, section 106-3598, 8, and number 10, as shown here. And I'm not going to go through all this. I just want to put this up so you can see that in the urban lot split standard, all the text in green are the new, are the standard we added in. That's not SB 9. It's in addition to what state law require. All the text in black are the one that is a carry-on from state regulate, state law. Same here with the two-unit residential development. One thing I want to call out here for the two-year residential development that we added in is the owner occupy for at least three years. Under SB 9, that requirement is only for subdivision of the lot, not for the two-unit residential development, but we're including that as part of the two-unit residential development as well. Because with the new SB 9 regulation that came out recently, you don't have to subdivide a lot. You can actually put in four units on that one single-family lot without dividing into two lots. We're also including new definition to our code, just to clarify some of the terms we have in the proposed ordinance. And affordability. So this was discussed with the Planning Commission, because in the urgency ordinance, we had a regulation in place where if you're going to rent out both unit, one of the unit needs to be rented at, for low income. And in discussion with our city attorney and doing further research, if we required that affordability requirement, then we would be subject to the new state law for doing inclusionary housing ordinance. And if we do that, so typically, an inclusionary housing ordinance will require a developer, if you want to build apartment or a condo of 100 units or so, 5 to 20% of that, depending on what our feasibility study come out, needs to be provided for affordable housing. So some cities require 5%, some cities can require up to 20% of the entire development to provide for affordable. So if we want to require that as part of our ordinance, then we need to do the inclusionary housing ordinance and do an economic feasibility study with HCD. It will be under their review and oversight. And then we have to also do an in lieu fee study to allow, to accommodate that if you build a house, I mean, multi-unit development, and you cannot make them affordable, then you have to pay an in lieu fee for us to use the money to develop affordable housing elsewhere in our city. And there's a lot more regulation to that as well, too, and Norma is on the line with us to answer any question from the council about that. So in discussion with the Planning Commission, the commission recommended that we do not include the permanent ordinance, but do further research on how can we include that in the future update of our ordinance. And also, under SB 9, under the urgency ordinance, it would be 50%, because if there's two units and one of it is affordable, it's 50%, and that will not comply with state law. So we have to do it for the research and analysis on that if we want to pursue that option. With that, staff recommended that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance, amending San Fran Municipal Code in our zoning and subdivision code, and amend just section 106-35981 to include a 10-foot front yard setback for flag lot, and section 106-3598101 and 2 to clarify common versus private open space, and to require a 150-square-foot minimum area of private open space for each unit. If the council disagrees with staff recommendation, the council can direct staff to come back at the next meeting to extend their urgency ordinance for another year. And that concludes staff presentation, and myself and our contract planner Eric Norris and Norma is also available to answer any question from the council.
Thank you. Want to have council comments or questions? Councilmember Solorio?
No comment at this time.
Councilmember Fajardo?
How many people have actually applied to split a lot under our current urgency ordinance?
We have zero application right now.
Do you believe that if we were to extend this, that we might have a better product? For example, we might see what the state allows or disallows other cities to do, thereby potentially giving us a better product in the end?
Well, the permit regulation does have a lot more design standard that will get a better product from what our urgency ordinance had. So if you want, I could take, show you the residential development standard that we summarize up there for lot design. We're actually asking them to, it's more robust than our urgency ordinance.
Sure, if you have that.
Can you pull up the presentation again? So here are the regulations for urban lot splits. So as you can see there, for lot design. In our urgency ordinance, we're pretty quiet on that. So in this ordinance, permanent ordinance, we're asking for the, each lot to have street frontage access, and it needs to have access to a public right-of-way. We're allowing flag lot to be created, and if a flag lot is created, you have, we clarified, it needs to be, the flag pole needs to be wide enough to, for a driveway, and also emergency access if needed. Whereas in an urgency ordinance, doesn't allow a flag lot, in which case, if they subdivide it, then there would have to be an access eastman. And the access eastman could just be a four-foot-wide pedestrian eastman. And then you come into who can maintain that access eastman when it comes to maintenance issue.
So couldn't some of these items be incorporated into the urgency ordinance? As opposed to making a final decision now? And I suppose any final decision could still be amended at a future meeting.
I don't think you can amend the urgency ordinance right now. I believe it's only for extension. Richard?
Yeah, I think that's correct, that the ordinance is proposed in its current form, so you may not be able to modify that, that part of the ordinance, but it is something to consider for the final ordinance.
And I would say to your, to your last point, ordinances are never final, right? So, I mean, they're, they're final, but they can always be reviewed and changed by city council. So if, if in a year from now, you know, this is an enhancement, or what staff is putting forward, you know, we believe after going through, you know, quite a few meetings with the Planning Commission, is an enhancement to the regulations of the urgency ordinance. If, you know, a year, eight months from now, a year from now, there are additional regulations, additional considerations that city council wants staff to consider, that can always be done at that time, and a new ordinance can be drafted or revised.
And also, I would like to add to that, too. It could be sooner, because right now, we're also watching what other cities are doing, and also waiting for any new guidelines that come from HCD on SB 9. So if there's new guidelines that come out that we feel like we need to amend the ordinance, we will bring it back to the council to permit ordinance for amendment and changes.
Right. And so there are items here that were discussed in the Planning Commission that, sorry, there are items that we discussed in the Planning Commission that are not in the presentation. And so I'm just curious in terms of whether staff determined that they weren't suitable recommendations, or whether they're not in compliance. But just the four that I recall off the top of my head are as follows. One was to have a dedicated area for trash cans. Another was to have some kind of stamp or approval for a landscaper, for drought-resistant landscaping. And again, these are some of the items that other cities were implementing in their urgency ordinances. A third was robust code enforcement. So if they're trying to build two more units, but their, for example, their primary unit is significantly out of compliance, you know, we would actually have all of that addressed simultaneously. And then the fourth is the quality of the payment for the, for the flag lot. You know, as I mentioned to you, my own personal experience, having showed many homes of flag lots, those very long driveways often get neglected and often deteriorate, ends up crumbling, and, you know, essentially go unfixed. And so these are just the items off the top of my head that I recall is discussing. There might have been a number more, but were all of these items vetted, or what were the conclusion on these various items?
So I remember a few of those items. Like the flag lot, that's the reason why we include the creation of a flag lot, because when you're looking at flag lot, you might just be looking at a retaining lot, but with an access eastman, with then coming to maintenance issue, whose response for maintaining that
Right.
flag pole area. Whereas a flag lot, that piece of land, the flag pole, is actually owned by the back property.
Correct.
So from a code enforcement standpoint, our code enforcement officer would then say, you're the owner of this strip of land. You have to maintain it. So for example, some of the question you asked about the trash can.
What is the maintenance standards even for driveways in the city? Like, I wouldn't even know that off the top of my head. But there's, you know, there's at least one parcel in San Fernando that has four units, and it's like a mishmash of some asphalt, some cement, a lot of dirt, and, you know, mixed in gravel. And is that, is that compliant with our, with our rules, or?
We'll have to take a look at the property. That will have, something that our code enforcement officer and our planner will have to work together in evaluating the site. Because we do have a section of the main, like, a lot of the issues you brought up, like, especially for landscaping. We actually have in our permit regulation that landscaping in the R1 needs to comply with our landscape regulation as we are working on updating it. We don't want to build new landscape regulation in here when we already have it in our zoning code elsewhere.
Okay. I mean, for me to comfortably vote on saying that I want to pass this, I would need a list of all the items that were put forward by the Planning Commission, and not that it is the oversight of the city council, but, you know, people the oversight of the city council, but, you know, people put, you know, serious thought into their proposals and their recommendations and to see why each recommendation was, was incorporated or rejected. Having said that, if there are the votes here to pass it today, I understand that. But, you know, I worked with some very thoughtful people and just wanted to make sure that all of those items were addressed before I give, you know, any matter before me a blessing.
Sure. I also like to remind that before this was presented to the planning commission for recommend for approval, it was presented to them as draft form as well for that, before we published it as a public hearing for them to recommend as approval. So they did look at this version twice.
I understand that. I understand. Thank you. That concludes my, my comments and questions.
Council member Montañez?
What was the response to how many, how many people have submitted for SB nine?
Zero applicant.
Zero applicants so far?
Yes.
We haven't had, we haven't had anybody trying to divide their lots or add ADUs. We've had, we've had ADUs but not SB nine.
That's correct. We have a lot of application for ADUs. We do have a lot of inquiries about SB nine, but after they look at our urgency ordinance, they weren't able to comply with it.
Okay. And how many ADU applications do we have? And then what's the process for that?
I don't have the list of how many ADU application we have for 2022, but we can definitely look into that. The process for ADU is really administrative approval. So it does, it's not subject to any public hearing or discussion or review. It's mainly an application that they file with us at the counter. We take it in and we have sixty days to approve the project. So sixty days from submission and working with the app and to get it approved. In that case, in which they submit, we will route it to Public Works and we give them time for review while we're also giving ourselves adequate time to respond to comment and work with the app and design changes to meet with our code. And then once that's approved, they go through building to pull their building plan. So it's ADU application runs through really quick because under state law, we don't have sixty days to work on it.
And are there any city input on design? Development standards? Any of that? Or is it pretty much whatever you bring in?
So currently, we've been using design guidelines for residential review and ADU ordinance is one of the items that's on our list to bring to the county, to the planning commission and then city council this year. Because one thing we would like to do is update our ADU ordinance to comply with state law and also include design standard. Because under the new law now, our design standard, we cannot require them to comply with it. But if we make them as objective design standard, then they will be required to comply with it. Right now, we can only negotiate with the property owner to give us a better design. But if we update our ADU ordinance to include objective design standard, then they will be required to comply.
What's the timeline to do that?
Well, our new associate planner is starting next week. So as soon as she start, I was going to have her start working on that ADU ordinance. And then we're hoping to bring that to the planning commission probably sometime early spring to get the discussion going. At least present a draft for discussion with the commission and see how long that takes through planning commission before we can bring it to city council.
So we don't really expect that to be in place for 2023?
It depends on how it goes at planning commission. If, if a planning commission recommend to city council fairly quickly, we can bring it to the council for adoption, tell them sometime 2023. It really depend on how many public comments we're also getting from the community as well, too, and addressing their concerns.
So I think these ordinances, the, the whole policy as a whole, it needs to be better, there needs to be more defined guidelines to it. And then I'd like to see what the current setbacks are. And existing setbacks as opposed to compared to what's being recommended, like if there's only, for example, a four-foot setback on the back of the properties to each property, that's not, it doesn't seem like it's very safe.
Unfortunately, we cannot change that and our city attorney can talk to that because that is in SB nine that the state have imposed in all city that they modify our site and rear yard setback for SB nine unit and ADU to only be four feet.
And that cannot be changed for fires, fire reasons, like public safety? There's just a lot of reasons why that to me seems very, very small. To have that, that four feet on one side or four feet on the other side, you're not giving people much space to for safety reasons, fires.
I can't remember what the fire code calls for access. It might be three or four feet. I'm not too sure, but that is the standard, because that is the same setback for ADUs and they're carrying that over for SB nine. It is in the state law. So in speaking with our city attorney and most cities do is that they're keeping that four-foot setback. We can't be more restrictive than that.
I'd like to see that. Yeah, I'd like to see that language. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, this is Norma Tabarez. Yeah, I, I just want to echo what Kanika is saying, that that's something that's a straight carryover from, from the state law. So, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room there in terms of changing, but we can, you know, certainly come back and present a comparison as to what it is now versus what the state mandates.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I'm concerned about that. And then I think the design of the unit, there isn't much there. So it's basically you just have to have a, a front door that faces the street. And each unit has to have a separate entrance. And so I feel all that needs to have more detail. Like this is just very, very general. And pretty much whatever you submit, you're going to get. It's really going to ruin, I think, you know, the feel of the neighborhood without us being, you know, more detailed. I'm concerned with the landscaping. We know that we need it for water infiltration. We know that we need it for extreme heat. We know we need it for biodiversity. We need it for like overall health. And it's not really speaking to live plant materials. You know, we're trying to get away from more, you know, more impermeable surfaces. So I just kind of feel like we are doing, like this is not going with the goals, the overall goals that we have, try to create a healthier environment. And you're just allowing for paving over, you know, more properties that are already pretty small. So I just, I feel like we, I'm not ready to vote for this. I think we need to spend more time, like actually developing more detail to the to the, the SB nine and ADU ordinances.
Council Montañez, I would like to address the landscape question you brought, or concern you brought up there. We have it in here that their landscape will comply with our R one zoning district. And we are working on a temporary landscape regulation for the R one zone. So whatever we, the council adopt for temporary landscape ordinance and also for the permit landscape ordinance, it will, they will be subject to that landscape requirement for this SB nine project. And we don't put in two location our zoning codes so that when we amend that section of our landscape or and then this SB nine project will be subject to that new ordinance, new regulation.
So I'd like to see that. I think we have to do it comprehensive. Right? Take a comprehensive, a full comprehensive approach to how we are doing this so that we get, you know, the right standards developed as opposed to doing pieces of it. And I think design both on the actual architectural design and also the landscaping and fitting with neighborhood character is very important. And then I also think that the owner, the owner occupation for only three years is not very, not very much. Pretty much we're just doing it for business as opposed to actually living there. So I think that the owner occupied should be longer.
I'd like to comment on that if I may.
If you don't mind, we're going to go around once and then we can return for your second comment.
So I think, I mean, that's it. I, I don't feel comfortable supporting it at this point.
Does that conclude your comments, Councilmember Montañez? Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Well, I, I am supportive of approving the ordinance at this time, but I, I do want more information. If we don't approve it, what are the setbacks for us as a city or our residents? If it's not approved tonight, is there, does it hinder us, hinder the residents in any way?
No, because we, we will come back to council to request for extension of the urgency ordinance. So the urgency ordinance that's in place, if the council approve it, then it will move forward for another year while we work on additional standards to be included in the permit regulation.
And I understand that some of the issues can be addressed through the code enforcement, which you presented. And I think you, you did a really great job and the planning commission did as well on, and you really thought it out quite a bit. You know, I initially I am, you know, like for approving it, but I'm not sure is it best to wait or, or approve it based on the, the questions that are brought up by council member Fajardo and Montañez. What are your thoughts?
I think from a staff perspective, either way, you know, as long as we maintain some regulations, which would be extended, you know, potentially if council is not comfortable, we want council to be comfortable with whatever they vote on as a body. So if you're not comfortable with these, these standards, which I would say are enhanced from the, from the urgency ordinance, but if we wanted to keep the urgency ordinance in place while we, you know, did look at some of these additional items, but also get landscape regulations in place and, and revise the ADU ordinance. You know, as long as there is some regulations in place, whether it's the urgency ordinance or this ordinance as a permanent ordinance, which the word permanent is misleading because we can always change it, right? If we could adopt this permanent ordinance and then, you know, once we change the ADU and the design standards, if there are updates that also need to be made to this permanent ordinance, we can make those at the same time. So, so either way, whether we extend it or, or adopt the permanent ones tonight, you know, there are, I think the residents are sort of protected from a proliferation of, you know, SB nine without some sort of regulations in place.
Okay. I'm done with my comment.
Thank you. I have one question right now, which is in addition to our commission meetings and obviously our public council meeting, what sort of outreach has been conducted to our community and like what sort of feedback have you received? For example, you mentioned that we haven't had applicants, but that people have been interested and had questions, but they couldn't comply. Have we collected that information for how this actually impacts people who would potentially utilize the ordinance?
Yeah. So we talked to the applicant when they come to the counter, share the urgency ordinance with them. And we encourage, we always let, we let them know that this is still being reviewed by planning commission and encourage them to submit their comments to the planning commission, but we have not received any written or verbal comments from them. Mainly just people inquiring about, do we allow SB nine? What can I do? They take a look at it and we pretty much gave them the urgency ordinance, explained a lot of it is from the state law. And once we educated what SB nine is, they were discouraged from applying for it. And I think the biggest discouraging was state law required them to be there for three years as owner occupied when they subdivide the lot. Whereas a typical subdivision, you can subdivide a lot and you don't have to live in one of those lot for three years. You can sell both of them out.
Thank you. Councilmember Fajardo, did you have an additional comment?
Not an additional comment, but I wanted to reply to the comment that Councilmember Montañez had, or provided more information on one of the comments that she made about owner occupancy. You know, in real estate, as I've mentioned at past city council meetings, owner occupancy is very hard to establish. I would probably say that it is the number one obfuscation or, you know, sometimes outright lie that people will engage in. It's really hard to prove where someone is living versus not living. And, you know, I can give you an example of, of a place where I sold a property where, you know, the whole unit was rented out, but this HOA required that the units be owner occupied. While the owner is saying that she sleeps there on a couch. So how are you really going to establish owner occupancy unless someone's barging in in the middle of the night? I mean, there are various ways to get around it. If there were a robust way, she's saying that, you know, three years is, you know, too few, that it should be more, if that's, if I heard correctly. And I can agree with that. But if there's a robust way to enforce that, then that would actually be, you know, desirable so that people would shy away from building these units if they aren't genuinely going to live in one of them. So it's kind of a double edged sword, you know, I'm not even sure if it could really be enforced.
Does that conclude your comment? Councilmember Montañez? Was that you?
No, this is, yeah, no, it's Norma Tabarez, city attorney. Yeah, just to add to what council member Fajardo said, just to clarify, SB nine itself, the language of the law says that, says that the owner intends to occupy for three years. So, you know, just to sort of magnify the enforcement challenge, you know, there, there really is no definition of intent there. So, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's a, I think it's valuable to have, but, but it's hard to say that there's any teeth behind it.
Thank you, Ms. Tabarez.
I think, I mean, that's the problem with a lot of laws is that it's the response is like, well, there's nothing you can do to enforce it. There's nothing you can do. So we as a city have to figure out ways. We need the city attorney's, you know, opinion on this. Ways to actually enforce laws so that it makes sense and so that it doesn't become this like lawless, people can do whatever they want, you know, structure in the city. So we need, we really need to spend more time to figure out how we could actually put up, put down regulations, ordinances that can be enforced and that should be enforced. So we maintain quality of life as opposed to just letting people do whatever they, whatever they can afford to do or want to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Montañez. Councilmember Solario or Mendoza, do you have any additional comments?
I have a comment. So I just have a question. So for the planning commission, since they have added enhancements to SB nine, my question is for Mr. Norris. Is there any reason, I guess, why would, we would not move forward right now? Any additional reason on your end?
Well, I think the ordinance that you have in front of you is a good one. It definitely goes farther than state law does. You know, as you've been advised, if you're not comfortable with it, obviously we can bring something else back. But I think what you have here, you know, in a number of ways goes farther than the other, mostly the other jurisdictions that we're working with. It can always be updated. You can add to it, you know, as Ms. Kith mentioned with the addition of some objective design standards, some beefed up landscaping standards that just apply generally to the R one zone. So I don't see any reason myself not to move forward with this ordinance. It's been heavily reviewed and heavily vetted with your attorney's office. So we do think it's a workable ordinance. And the discussion that I think has just really highlighted the fact that we're dealing with something that didn't arise as things normally would from this council. This came from Sacramento. So Sacramento is asking you, or not asking you, they're telling you to do things that are in some cases very difficult. And as, you know, the one councilman pointed out about owner occupancy, maybe impossible to enforce. But this is where we are. This is the status of the law. But what you have in front of you, I think, is a good workable solution to dealing with a complex issue that the state has thrown in your lap.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I add something? So maybe Norma can talk about this to address council member Fajaro concern about some of those issues that came up during our planning commission discussion, but it's not in this ordinance. Based on the new regulation that came out for SB nine, it pretty much tells us that we can develop these standards, but it needs to be consistent with the R one zone. So a lot of the issue that came up are maintenance issue that we couldn't include in SB nine. Norma, can you add into that? I know, Norma, we talk about that, like our regulation needs to be consistent with what we require in our one zone or in our multifamily zone, right, Norma?
That is the case, but I, I don't recall the specific comments or going line by line as far as what was mentioned by council member Fajardo. So I would defer to planning staff for that, but in general, correct. You know, the, the standards that are implemented, the objective standards that are in regulations that are required for SB nine units, you know, do need to be consistent with the underlying R one zone. that are required for SB nine units, you know, do need to be consistent with the underlying R1 zone.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the comments from Councilmember Montañez regarding the landscaping. So let's say this ordinance is approved and then we come up with something for the landscaping or the conserving of water and all these other comments made. How would, if this, if we put in an ordinance after or make other changes, how would that affect the, this ordinance at this time if it's approved?
So if the council adopt the ordinance now and we amend the landscape regulation in the R1 zone, it would not require changes to this proposed ordinance because whatever we change in the landscape regulation will apply to SB nine because the way it's written right now, we are deferring landscape compliance to comply with the section we're working on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the affordability requirement, I had attended a commission meeting and from my understanding, it was staff's recommendation to the commission to not include that and because that requires more on our end to investigate how much that would cost and all of the things that you had mentioned earlier in your presentation. What would it take to perform that work to better assess whether or not we want to include an affordability requirement?
So first we have to, I think the first thing we need to do is really do our economic feasibility study, if that's what the council want, to determine if we're going to require development to provide affordable. If we're going to do inclusionary housing ordinance, how many percentage of affordability can we provide? Because one of the things that we cannot do, because the purpose of the economic feasibility study is to ensure that the ordinance does not constrain the production of housing and that's what HCD want. So we will have to do that first before we can even come up with a number if we say, because for example, in the other cities that we have worked in, they propose 20% and HCD challenging them that is 20% the proper percentage for what you need for affordability in your city. So we'll have to do that study first and I don't know what the cost for that would be. And then we also have to do the inclusionary ordinance, so we'll probably need more staff and more help from contract planning or a different planning firm to help us prepare the ordinance as well as the economic feasibility study and also the in-lu fee, just to establish a program to require affordable, to acquire affordable development. The inclusionary housing itself is good because like if we get a residential development that comes in and they don't want to do density bonus, but they just want to do straight apartment and not provide any affordable, then that's when the inclusionary housing could kick in is that, well, you know, we have an ordinance in place that if you build more than 10 units, 20% or 5% needs to be affordable. We currently don't have that. Right now, we're getting affordable units because when applicant comes in for multi-unit development or condo development, we encourage them to give us affordable units. So first we have to establish the ordinance, develop all the study that we need for HCD to approve. And then we're going to have to develop capacity to implement and maintain it. Because if we're start collecting in-lu fee study, we, we need to justify, Eric can actually talk more about that. He's more familiar with that than I am. We're going to have to do oversight of the in-lu fee, working with housing developer to find a site to develop affordable housing and the cost is very extensive. Eric, do you have anything to add into that? I know you were, you presented that planning commission that I missed. So maybe you can do a quick recap for our council. Why did staff recommend that we didn't include affordability?
I can clarify. Eric, before you jump in, I want to clarify that the staff report calls for investigating the feasibility of that. So I mostly wanted to give you an opportunity to recognize that this is part of a work plan or might need additional contracting, which we should be considering in our future budget. So if it is still something in the staff report as something that we should be investigating, I think we would need an estimate of what those costs are so that the council can consider that in this upcoming budget session.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we have any additional comments at this time?
I have two questions. So no parking is required, right?
The ordinance that we're proposing is requiring to provide one parking per unit if they're not within half a mile of a high transit corridor or a major transit stop. So SCAG released a map for high transit corridor, but we do not have a map. We do not have a map for major transit corridor yet. And I'm in discussion with SCAG on working on that map. Before we had a, can you let me go further on the presentation? I want to share, I want to share the map that SCAG already put together.
Niko, it's at the very end of the PowerPoint show, slide number 19.
There it is. So here is a map of what SCAG already put together. So the outline in red is our city boundary. The area in blue are the area that's in the high transit corridor, in which case we know we cannot require any parking at all. The area that's still in gray, that's not blue. Those are the one I'm working with SCAG on to see what, how, what larger part of that area qualify under the major transit stop half a mile from that. Before, when we had an intern that had access to JS with SCAG data, he just did a preliminary study and analysis and he said 98% of our city are in the high transit corridor or a major transit stop. But I want that clarification to come from SCAG that it is 98% because right now, based on this, we still have a portion that we can require parking.
But that, that portion is only the white piece?
Yeah, the white piece. And even that area is, that's a questionable piece that I'm trying to get clarification on. Because they, the state law is high transit corridor or major transit stop.
So no requirement, everything that's south of Fifth Street, there's no requirement for parking?
That's correct.
So how do you, how do you tell me that it's good planning when we're already having, you know, parking issues? What can we do to mitigate? When you're, when we're going to be adding potentially, you know, dividing lots and adding four units? Maybe six units to your ADUs? So what's the proposal, like, to deal with parking when we are, when we are having parking issues now?
So with that parking issue right now, the way we're actually approaching it is to work, looking into the residential permit requirement where the residents living there can have parking. I believe public work is working on that. Because this parking requirement, this parking restriction is not something that we're imposing, as Eric mentioned, is something that the state have imposed on us for ADU as well as SB nine.
You know, Niko, if I could just add, in, in dealing with this in other places, what you see when, particularly in a place like San Fernando where you don't have, you have transit, but it's not a very robust system. You're not, you're not Portland or New York where it's more feasible to live, excuse me, if you don't have a car. If you're trying to build housing in San Fernando that someone is going to either want to buy or rent, more than likely you're going to provide parking, whether the city requires you to or not. And we see the same thing with commercial developments. If you turned off all of your parking standards for commercial tomorrow, developers would still provide parking for their retail centers, for instance, or their office buildings. Because that's how you get to things in San Fernando. You don't really, you don't take the bus everywhere. You don't take the light rail. For the most part, you still drive. So I don't think you'll see the immediate cessation of anybody providing parking for new development, even with SB, you know, with this new state law, simply because the market demands that people still drive, they need a place to put their car. And that's what we've seen in other places, that when you turn down the parking standards, they, they tend to continue to stay at a level pretty close to what you require now.
Also, I would like to add too, in this proposed ordinance that we're including, we're also clarifying that if you want to provide parking, you can park on the driveway that's in your front yard setback. Our current code right now does not allow any parking in the front yard setback. So this section of SB nine, the proposed ordinance allow you to do that. But it must be on the driveway. It can't be on the landscape area.
Or it's your yard.
No, we do not allow on the yard. We, the proposed order only allowed to be on the driveway in the front yard setback.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I still feel it needs to be more comprehensively designed for everything from the actual architectural design to parking to landscape setbacks. We just, you know, moving forward with it, allowing it to just, to be done like this is going to start creating problems for the, you know, for the neighborhoods. And, you know, one of our big priorities is to make sure that we maintain the character of our neighborhoods. So if we could have more time, I think we need to spend more time to actually be able to look at, I mean, things like the water system, you know, looking at street infrastructure, you know, looking at our sidewalks, you know, when you begin to increase the density really high and we're falling behind, we're not able to keep up with our streets, we're not able to keep up with our sidewalks, we're not able to keep up, you know, with our city maintenance, like that needs to be taken care of. That we need to address those and really come forward with a more comprehensive plan as opposed to just continuing to allow or enable, you know, a planning process that is, that feels, you know, kind of, it feels like it's very siloed as opposed to comprehensive.
Does that conclude your comments and questions, Councilmember Montañez?
Yes.
If there are?
If I may just, just kind of reiterate that it prob, this process does feel siloed and piecemeal because this, going back to what Mr. Norris said, these are, these are being imposed on us by the state. They're not at, if, if, if this was being, were being driven by the city, we certainly would not, you know, be piecemealing it or be more comprehensive. But that flexibility is, is not available to us. I just, and I do just want to be clear to council, someone could still come and pull an SB nine. This isn't a moratorium on SB nine lot splits. We, we just, there's, there are, it's just a different set of regulations. So they could come tomorrow and still split based on the current, you know, regulations. It's, we're not, there's no moratorium on it until we get it figured out. In fact, I believe that the state did not allow a moratorium. Sometimes we can't put moratoriums on.
That's correct. We looked into that when we did the urgency ordinance to see if we can put a moratorium on and we couldn't. And that's why we've proposed an urgency ordinance, just to have some basic standard in place that's more restrictive than what the state had. And this proposed ordinance before you this evening is more robust than the urgency ordinance. We, our design standard is really vague and that there's one that I want to point out is that we carry it on from the urgency ordinance is that the new units must match the architectural style of the existing home. I understand Councilmontañez want a more robust design standard, which we can include into the, this proposed ordinance. But we can do this in multiple ways. So the council can not adopt a proposed ordinance and direct us to extend the urgency ordinance, or the council can adopt a proposed ordinance and direct us to continue working on the design standard to bring back amended ordinance to be adopted at a later date as well, too.
So just to, just to find, just to cap off, I just wanted to say like the, the purpose was more in, in other, in the past, we were able to have a moratorium for two years while we did figure it out and have a more comprehensive set of regulations put in place. The state has taken that tool away from us in, in this instance, and I see them continuing to do that as they, in Sacramento, piecemeal housing policy and push it down. So I, I just wanted to put that out there. And Niko, explain the options. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to make lemonade out of lemons. We're really trying to put forward what we can to protect the neighborhood, feel as much as possible, understanding that this is, this is not perfect, it's progress, right? So we, we want to continue to progress toward what, you know, to improve these ordinances and these standards, understanding this isn't, this isn't perfect, this is not a perfect solution. But it is, it is putting some more stringent regulations in place than what we have under urgency ordinance. But again, we certainly could extend the urgency ordinance for another year and, and while we continue to work on the landscape design, which is coming relatively, you know, in the next few months and then also some ADU setbacks. So I just wanted to, to make that comment through that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza? Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Just, I guess, I'm just going to bring it down really simple. Just if we approve this tonight and what is the worst case scenario of an applicant coming in? And we don't have the recommendations from that or the suggestions from Councilmember Fajardo and Montañez? What are the worst case scenarios that we would end up with?
Can I give an example? Is the flag lot a good example where we wouldn't have standards that they have to? So, so, so one scenario that would be less than desirable under our current urgency ordinance where if, if someone came in now, they could technically split a lot in two. So there's a front lot and a back lot. And instead of having to actually build a, you know, a driveway that's, that complies with sort of our driveway standards and have a, also a pedestrian walkway to go get back to that flag lot, they could, so that I think it would require almost of 10 feet of access. I think six feet for driveway plus four feet. That, that, that would be what our new standards would be. Under our current urgency ordinance, they could just come in and split it, front lot, back lot. And there would have to be some access to the back, but it's, it would be, you know, like the, like Councilmember Fajardo said, it, it could just be, you know, almost like a, like a dirt road or, you know, it wouldn't have the same, same standards because it would just be an easement. It could be done under just an easement as opposed to be required to be a driveway that they own that land and that has maintenance standards associated with. That's one example.
And also I want to build upon that. So in our urgency ordinance sense, it, so one thing that we added here is actually from a recommendation of the planning commission with the flag lot, is to make that flag pole accommodate a driveway. Whereas in our urgency ordinance, it doesn't need to accommodate a driveway. It can be just a four foot wide pedestrian access to the back. And the intent of requiring a driveway there, it was brought up by the commissioner, is to accommodate parking. So even though they're not putting parking on that back lot, there's no garages or carport, but they can accommodate parking along that driveway, on that driveway.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing I also want to add is the private open space. So in our urgency ordinance, it doesn't ask them to provide any private open space. So they could build, what you see here is mainly just box housing with no private patio or anything. But in our proposed ordinance, we're required that each unit have 150 square feet of private open space and that's a nice enclosed patio where the resident can hang outside without being disturbed by the neighbor. Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments by the council, I'd like to open up public comments and ask the clerk if there are any public testimonies submitted.
There have been no public testimonies submitted.
At this time, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any motions?
We need to move to close the public testimony portion.
That's, no, it's literally what I.
Yeah, what is closed is the public comment portion of the public hearing. So the, the current deliberation or motion making, that's still technically part of the public hearing. So it seems like the motion is to close the public comment portion.
The public hearing.
The public comment portion of the public hearing.
Right. The public hearing also encompasses your own deliberation and discussions on the record. So, so it is, it is the public comment portion of the public hearing that's closed. And then I think you can entertain motions at that time.
Yeah, are you, are you making a motion?
No, I was just clarifying for your benefit. But if there's a motion.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
I'll, I'll simplify things. I will make the motion to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Call for the vote. Councilmember Solorio?
I'm going to stop really quick. Are we voting to adopt SB nine right now?
And so if I may, so there are different ways and it tends to be at the, you know, the mayor is leading, you know, leads the public. So there are different ways to, to close, you know, a public hearing. Some, if you're, if a more formal mayor says, I want to close the public hearing, a motion, a second, roll call.
She's asking for approving it right now.
So the other, the other way is say, if there's no objections, I'll close the public hearing. And if, if there doesn't necessarily need to be a formal motion second, if you're just. if you're just closing the public hearing and there's no objections, that also, that would also constitute closing the public hearing.
And, and regarding the question, you're not, the, the motion is not to approve the underlying matter, it's just to decide whether you want to...
It's weird, this is a, the public hearings are a little weird how they're set up.
Now, a- after that is done, I mean, if, if there is no desire for further deliberation, then at that point, you can close the public hearing and then entertain motions at that point.
Did we have a second? Thank you, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez? Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed, nope, we're still gonna deliberate if you'd like.
Just the public, just the public comment portion of it.
Thank you, does anyone have any additional comments or questions on this item?
Uh, I stated my piece, if the council wants to approve it, obviously, you know, uh, it takes three votes and that, that's fine, but I would say that, uh, staff really should come back at a future meeting with a list of the, uh, questions, like, a very specific list, not like just like a broad, general, like, uh, conceptually, we all wanted to talk about this, but a very detailed list of all the recommendations from the Planning Commission, um, because as, just as I mentioned, four of them off the top of my head weren't incorporated into this, um, but even though, you know, Councilmember Montañez touched on an important point, the owner occupancy, we discussed this in the Planning Commission as well, but even if it is hard to enforce, I think that we should actually have the most stringent rules possible to try and enforce that, because at least our intent to enforce the rule of the law and police it can potentially be a deterrent to someone who is intentionally trying to break it or avoid it, so I think that, uh, by reexamining the Commission's comments and by having stronger mechanism to try and enforce the owner occupancy, this could be made a better ordinance, but given that I feel that, uh, some of the items that the Commission had been discussed are not necessarily included in here, there's not a sufficient response to it, that's the reason that I do not support it tonight, but I completely see the opposite side, so it's not as though this is a, you know, I think a clear-cut issue, I understand where my other colleagues are coming from, but that concludes my comments for this, uh, matter in its entirety.
I have a comment, yes, so, um, Mr. Kimball, my question is for you, if we move forward with SB nine tonight, that means that we would apply more restrictions than we currently already have, right, so someone can still apply for, um, splitting the lot, um, without the current restrictions, so technically, they would have less restrictions than they, than they would if we move it forward, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Montañez, do you have any further comments or questions?
No, I just feel we should be more comprehensive about it and, um, do it right, so I don't, uh, I'll leave voting now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mendoza?
I would, uh, like to move forward to approve the ordinance and, uh, continue working on the design standards and, um, landscaping and, and address the concerns from Councilmember Farhado, uh, but I would consider, um, approving it as it is, because, um, we don't want to end up with the, the scenario that, uh, Mr. Kimball brought up and the, with comments from, uh, Ms. Keith on, uh, on the project that it's not favorable for the community, so, that's where I stand.
Is there a motion?
So do I make a motion?
Thank you, is there a second to Vice Mayor Mendoza's motion?
I second her motion.
Thank you, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
No.
Councilmember Montañez?
No.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
No.
Okay, so the...
The motion fails, we needed three affirmative votes.
Do we know the expiration date of the current urgency ordinance?
Yeah, so that expiration date is January 19th, so we'll, um...
Well, let me ask, is there direction to come back on the 19th with an extension of the, so it would be...
Maybe on the 17th.
So, I would like to make a motion, um, I would like to make a motion to come back at the next city council meeting with a motion, or with the option to extend the current ordinance, or emergency ordinance, and the option to pass this with the additional items discussed today, so that it is a more comprehensive presentation, is, does that suffice, Mr. Padilla?
Well, um, if I may ask, uh, by additional items, so there was the list that required...
Right, the four items that I recall off the top of my head, plus the owner occupancy requirements, I just feel that, you know, obviously, we have to comply with state rules, but I don't think that we should shy away from being pioneers on certain items, and I understand that you're saying that there are certain issues that, uh, you know, you might have had to backtrack before where you thought we could do it, and those aren't your words, but that's my understanding, um, and so I, I'm not disputing that, but I just feel that, uh, staff might have taken what sounded to be, um, the best recommendations, and not necessarily all of them, but I really value everything that was put forward, and I would just rather us, instead of having this as a continuing item, you know, come back one more time with all of it, better vetted, Mr. Padilla?
Well, I just need to be recognized by the...
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, what I would re- re- recommend then is, rather than close this public hearing, uh, just simply continue it to the new date, and at that continued hearing, have the option to bring this back in some reformula, the, the permanent ordinance in some reformulated form, or at least with additional information, but also preserve the option to, to extend the urgency ordinance, so that there is at least something on the books to address the matter, so that would be my recommendation procedurally.
And let me just double check, this, so, that was the intent of the motion that I was trying to make, but, let me see, said, direct staff to schedule and notice a public hearing, uh, so the reason that I think that that might not be possible, and clearly I'm not the legal expert, is that if we simply continue this item, it actually doesn't even have an option to extend the emergency ordinance, because if you read item C, it says to direct staff to schedule and notice a public hearing on January 17th to consider an additional one-year extension.
Uh, right, I, I don't think that precludes the ability to have, uh, a public hearing that serves sort of two purposes, to either, to either continue deliberating on the underlying ordinance or to discuss the extension, uh, because if we don't come back in time with the extension, the extension expires.
Okay.
Mayor, may I add to that?
Yes.
So, the public hearing notice that we sent out was only for adoption of the proposed ordinance, we do have a notice of public hearing to extend the urgency ordinance in place, but it has not been published yet, we can get it published this Thursday to give that option open for the council at the meeting, because if we bring this back at the next council meeting, that's January 17, and our ordinance expires on January 19, so we're supposed to get it adopted by January 19, that's what's my understanding discussion with Norma, so if the council did recommend approve, if the council recommended approval at the next meeting, we wouldn't be able to do a second reading before January 19.
Uh, I'm not sure I understand, though.
I think what, um, she's saying is that we actually don't have time to continue this, because we would require a second reading to approve the extension of the emergency ordinance, but if we're meeting two days prior to expiration, we cannot do that.
But the urgency ordinance wouldn't require a second reading?
No, you, um, you could, um, extend the urgency ordinance on the 17th, but you wouldn't be able to...
Be the only option, yes, is what you're saying.
We wouldn't be able to, um, so the 17?
If, if I may, would, if, if you wanted to adopt this regu, this, uh, uh, this, the permanent regulations on the 17th, you could still do that, they're not, they're not, they're, it's 30 days that they're, um, it, it, they're not effective for 30 days, so there would be a gap, we could just extend the interim ur- urgency ordinance for 30 days to cover that gap until it was a permanent.
I, I'm so sorry, and I hope I can clarify this, so there, there are two tracks here, one is what to do about the permanent ordinance, and the second is what to do about extending, uh, an outstanding urgency ordinance, so on the first track, there's been no decision essentially made on that item tonight, uh, you could simply close the hearing and just leave it at that, and then bring it back at some future date that you staff and you direct, or, uh, if there's some optimism that between now and the next meeting, staff can either present some plot, you know, reasonable edits or, or provide additional information that might make all or some majority of you comfortable with the permanent ordinance, then as to that item, you could simply continue this hearing to that future date, now as to the urgency ordinance, which is, covers the same subject matter, but is kind of a different procedural vehicle, uh, that just requires you to meet sometime before it expires, the current ordinance expires and, and extend it.
So, what I'm confused about, though, is that the urgent, the continuator, sorry, the extension of the urgency ordinance is, I'm calling it hypothesized in this agenda item, it was never, uh, published, you know, as Ms., as Ms. Keith said, it doesn't give us the option in this current agenda item to even vote on the urgency ordinance?
Correct.
So that's why in the motion, I'm intending to have it so that whatever publications have to be done will be done, so that we actually have both tracks.
Right, right.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable to do, I think, under the circumstance, so that at least you don't lose momentum on whatever.
So then, is it sufficient to say that I moved to continue this public hearing to the next city council meeting and to include the option to extend the urgency ordinance? Is that a sufficient motion?
Uh, that is properly worded, and if there's a second for it, that can be done.
However, before, before, I just, I did want to clarify, because you had more to the motion, so the continued...
Oh, that's right, thank you for reminding me.
I just wanted to, I just want to make sure so that if we bring something back, if council approves your motion...
Thank you.
Bring something back, what were the other items that you were including?
With a list of all the recommendations by the Planning Commission, which ones were incorporated and which ones were not incorporated, and for which reason, and to have a more robust option, uh, for oversight on the owner occupancy requirement.
And for what it's worth, um, the, any extension of the urgency ordinance requires four-fifths vote, so that actually the threshold for approving, and the, the extension is actually higher than approving first reading of the permanent ordinance, so just wanted to prepare you all for that.
And I do want us to continue to discuss design, guidelines, architectural, and landscape, to make sure those are included.
All right, so I'm just gonna reword this more, so architectural, landscape, okay, so then the motion would be then, I think this is my third rewording, I would move to continue this item to the next city council meeting and to also have the option to extend the urgency ordinance with any necessary publications that may be required, um, and for staff to update the urgency ordinance so that it includes a list of items discussed in the Planning Commission, as well as, uh, staff's response as to why certain items were included or excluded, and to have additional options for architectural and landscape standards, and robust options for enforcing owner occupancy rules.
If, if I could just qualify that within one respect, and I'm sorry for dragging this out, uh, I'm not sure the degree to which we can modify the urgency ordinance from one extension to the other, uh, but if you want to at least condition that on our ability to see what could be changed, if anything, we're, we're happy to, that would probably be acceptable.
And, and I just want to set expectations here, um, you know, the list of, of items with, we, we can probably pull together, I mean, we, we basically have a, a week before the agenda items do again, so, um, it, uh, we, we won't have landscape standards completed in a week, and we won't have the, um, you know, some of the design standards completed in a week, those, those are parallel efforts that we're working on, so I just want to set that expectation that, I, I, I don't want to say that we can come back with landscape standards and design standards, uh, in a, in a week, because I, I know that's not going to, going to happen, we can, we can certainly have the list on the Planning Commission and the responses as to whether or not those are, you know, why they were, were not included in the, um...
The modifications that I think you're contemplating, uh, Councilman, would be more appropriate for the, for the permanent ordinance, because the permanent ordinance hasn't been approved in any form yet, so that would certainly lend itself to some tweaking between now and the, uh, and the next, and the, and the date of the continued hearing.
Well, I do accept your qualification, um, that you mentioned, and I understand what Mr. Kimball is saying, obviously, we would want the most robust presentation possible, so whatever can be done during that time, it, it might make the determination whether we, uh, go with the so-called permanent, uh, ordinance, uh, or the, uh, extension of the urgency ordinance, uh, but my motion, as stated previously, stands with the qualification as made by Mr. Padilla.
Councilmember Montañez, are you seconding the motion?
Uh, yes.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes. At this time, city, Mr. City Attorney, do we, we will close the public hearing, or because we have a second one, is it required?
The public hearing is effectively being continued, so you, you just nearly can move on to the next order of business.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution approving the financing for an energy-saving performance contract with Willdan Energy Solutions for turnkey design, engineering, and construction services for solar heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and battery energy storage systems at city facilities. Staff, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, the Director of Public Works, Mr. Baumgartner will provide the presentation.
Um, thank you, um, just, if you provide, uh, give me one second, we'll pull up the presentation for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, I, I tend to keep this a pretty brief, uh, presentation, we've, we've, we've covered this fairly robustly, uh, in the past, um, but I just to provide a project recap, um, in 2022, uh, I also just want to mention that we have, um, I believe we have, uh, Ben and, uh, David from, from Willdan, um, we have , uh, members from Willdan Energy Solutions here tonight that can provide any, um, uh, answers on, on technical questions regarding the scope, uh, of the project, but in 2022, Willdan Energy Solutions helped develop a scope of work, uh, for this, uh, this energy project that involved installation of solar panels, a battery storage systems, uh, at city facilities, as well as HVAC replacement, full HVAC replacement at our police department facility. During our, uh, public hearing held on November 21st, uh, 2022, council awarded the full scope contract, which involved a- all three of those elements that I discussed in the previous bullet, um, but had given us direction to return in January to discuss funding options, um, and those funding options include, um, uh, full financing, uh, after the, uh, after taking out the funds that had already been appropriated for the project, uh, additional, uh, contributions from city funds to reduce the amount of financing that's required, just looking at the HVAC-only portion of the project, and for that, uh, a full financing of 2.5 million, and then the last option, option number four, is HVAC only but no financing, and just looking at using, uh, city funds. Uh, and just very quick, uh, recap on the scopes, for that full HVAC replacement, this is considered a priority project, uh, and council has deemed this to be a priority project, uh, at the police department, the system is currently over 35 years old, uh, we have, uh, approximately 20 service calls each year to deal with, um, repairs, uh, to the AC system, uh, the HVAC system at PD, um, it, one of the critical, uh, needs that we, you know, is also in, in addition to comfort of, of staff and the community, uh, is the, the new communication equipment that was, uh, added a couple of years ago, uh, and keeping the cooling, uh, for that room, uh, in good shape, um, and replacing an older system with brand-new technology that's easier to maintain and cheaper to maintain over time. Uh, the other portion of the work, uh, being the solar and battery energy storage, uh, systems, the installation, for solar P, uh, photovoltaic panels to be added, uh, sort of in a carport configuration at our police department facility, as well as battery electric storage systems at both police department and the public works facilities, um, the battery storage work is offset by, um, a rebate program that the city qualified for back in 2021. So I am going to turn this over to, uh, to our Finance Director, Erica Melton, to give us a little breakdown on the project costs, uh, as well as our, our recommendation for, uh, what, what route to take and which option to follow.
The table that's presented in front of you recaps the information that is provided in the agenda report, uh, in terms of recapping that, uh, the full scope of the project is $5,645,679 versus HVAC only, which is $3,449 and 900, sorry, 300, $3,449,941, we've also recapped some of the potential funding... Uh, we've also recapped some of the potential funding sources for it. Uh, staff does recommend going with option for the HVAC only project with no financing. And just to kind of, uh, highlight some of the reasons for that in terms of pursuing that option. Number one is that HVAC, the HVAC system is of course the, um, the priority area and the critical project pathway for the city at this time, given the significance of HVAC at our police department. Um, additionally, we recognize that the solar market is changing from even what we saw in 2021. And we believe that there are going to be extensive rebates over the next three years, uh, from the federal government to the effect that again, that market is changing and we could take advantage of it in the future. Uh, the second reason is of course, because if we were to pursue this with no financing, our general, uh, fund reserves currently are healthy enough to, uh, sustain what we're attempting to do at this point. Uh, and of course, that's one of the main reasons that we have a general fund reserve, especially the balance that we have right now. It's so that we can use it for one-time important capital maintenance items such as this. And again, this is one time, it's non-recurring, it's not as though it's, uh, something that it will be ongoing in nature. But again, one-time benefit to take advantage and it's very much in line with the city's strategic goals. And specifically, uh, strategic goal number six, in which the city is attempting to work towards, um, a lot of its capital projects and some of that deferred maintenance. Uh, for those reasons, again, it is the, it is our recommendation to proceed with the HVAC only project in which we would utilize, uh, the general fund reserves only. Uh, we wouldn't at that point have to touch ARPA funding or pursue financing options, which would be at cost to the city.
And is that, that concludes staff recommendation. I would just like to clarify that the, um, I'm not sure if we made the statement that the public hearing, that opened the public hearing. This is another public hearing, so, um, just wanted to, on the record, make sure we open the.
We were advised that we didn't have to close public hearing.
It's a separate public hearing, so that was the last public hearing, so I'm sorry for the confusion. Um, this is a separate public hearing for this issue, this particular, um, item. So we need, would, we can just state for the record that the staff comments were all on the public, as part of the public hearing for item number, item number six for the HVAC.
Yeah, I, I think we, we did comment that the prior matter was continued, so it didn't need to be closed. The public hearing is essentially continued to a future date.
Understood.
But for this item, we need to open a new public hearing.
Correct. Yeah, I, I don't, did, I did step away. Did, did anyone open the public hearing?
I think the agenda item was read. For the record, it's easier if staff provides a sheet of the steps to take because public hearings are weird processes. They really are for anyone, not for Mayor Rodriguez, for anyone who does them. So it's just easier to have the sheet. And I normally would preface with, I hereby open the public hearing and then read the agenda item. But in all fairness, the instructions that Mr. Padilla gave me were slightly different than Mr. Olivares. So there's probably some minor interpretation in terms of the best way to do it.
But to cover our bases, the public hearing is open and all the staff comments were part of this item. Thank you for staff presentation. Did you have anything else to add?
No, at this time, we welcome the, uh, we welcome your questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take council questions and comments, uh, starting with Councilman Farhado.
I just have two, I think anyhow, you know, and I, I appreciate you giving me a recommendation. I had actually called to ask you what your recommendation was, Mr. Kimball, because I didn't see it in the agenda item. Um, not that we solely base it off of that, but it's at least another data point. You know, one of the appeals to solar energy is that over the life of the product, this, in this case, you know, the solar panel, it actually pays for itself. So is your analysis that if we were to get the financing for the solar panels, I can go with the more expensive route? That it would not pay for itself or that it's ambiguous or that we would lose money?
Um, I will let, uh, Will Dan, um, they did the financial analysis that is required as part of this item, um, for financing. So I will let them respond to that.
Uh, yeah, Benjamin, if you could, um, if you could.
Sure.
Provide some comment there.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a great question. Um, yeah, so certainly the, the solar PV photovoltaic and the battery storage projects, um, generate more energy savings. Um, the, the HVAC replacement is more of a capital improvement project, but it's obviously a big priority and very necessary. It's also electrifying the, the cooling in, in that building for, um, for the most part, so switching away from natural gas. So I think, uh, you know, they're, they're fairly similar in, in kind of cash flow when you take them all together because, because the, the battery storage and, and solar PV is, is a more capital intensive, um, project. But, um, yeah, it will generate energy savings over the, over the life of the system.
But just to clarify, is it, is, is it sufficient energy savings to fully offset the cost of constructing the solar and battery storage? There, there is still a net cost?
Hmm.
I believe that was the question.
It, it, it is, uh, because I want to see what the total cost is with the financed amount. Because obviously if we finance, just I'm going to throw out around number of million dollars. It's not as though we just get a loan for a million dollars and we pay a million dollars back. There's a, uh, you know, a premium that's added with all the interest that we pay. So I'm trying to figure out what the net savings is, if we go with the finance option for the solar panels? Because we save more at the, at the life of the, or at the end of the loan? Or if, you know, we save money by not doing solar panels?
Sure. Yeah, I believe the, the cash flow analyses are included and, and they do, they do, um, you know, it's cash flow positive with the battery storage and the, and the solar PV over the, um, you know, uh, projected 25-year life span of the, of the system.
Well, could you point it out to me?
Sorry, it's attachment C, I believe.
Right. So it has the total repayment. Oh, there we go, the net savings, okay.
Yes, the net savings for both projects are in the, in the rightmost column.
So we have a higher net sa- sorry, the net savings is, the net savings by not doing it? Or the net savings by having the solar panel? Because the net savings is going down every year. On, because when you look at 2047, year 2047, we're only saving 66,000.
Right. Yeah, so, so the loan repayment, um, payments end after 20 years. It's a, it's a 20-year loan for the, for the entire project, which includes the, the HVAC project as well. Um, and then so the, the savings that continue from the, the, um, energy project in the, in the left two most, uh, two most left-hand columns, uh, sort of the total energy savings continue, um, for those last five years. And, and that's where that, that margin is made up.
Okay, yeah, I, I am just confused on this net savings, especially because for the first third of the chart approximately, um, or the column, the far right column, this is net savings, it's a positive number. And then when you get to the second third, it's a negative number connotated by the parentheses. And then when you get to the, and it's a positive number again, so I'm having a trouble understanding.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, uh, so, so the, the front end of the project, um, is kind of boosted by the incentive amounts that, um, are, that kind of come with the battery storage, uh, so the self-generation incentive program, S-GIP, um, as well as the, the estimated incentives from the federal investment tax credit, um, direct payment. So those are shown there. Um, I, I believe that the loan, uh, with, with the costs for the HVAC project as well, um, uh, get, um, the, the, the energy savings alone don't, don't cover the loan payment for all of the entire project. Uh, but on the whole, uh, it, it cash flows after 25 years.
So after 25 years, it does. All right, I see. So, yeah, I, I will be honest, despite the fact knowing math well, I'm just still a bit confused why it starts as a cash flow and then it's a negative and then it turns back into a cash flow. And so, uh, maybe it's something that I need to sit down with staff. I don't feel like I can, I mean, if I can understand this better, I can make a decision today, but.
Sure, I, I think, um, possibly, uh, so those are the net savings in, in each year. And I think they're, they're summed up at the, at the bottom. I think maybe in a previous version, we had like sort of the cumulative cash flow shown where it, where it sort of, um, takes the previous years and, and adds it. So, um, we could, we could provide that, uh, as, as part of this, uh, or, or, you know, um.
Ben, if I, if I might, I, I think the, to me, looking at the chart real quick, it looks like it's the deferred maintenance savings that, um, you have in the first maybe 10 years of the project and those.
Hmm, okay.
Going away. And I think that's about the rough time where it starts shifting over to a negative net savings for a few years. So maybe, maybe just explaining those deferred maintenance savings and why those go away over time.
I'm sure, yeah. David, I think, um, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, excuse me. Um, so, and, and also, you know, I think it'd be pretty easy to follow if we broke apart, I believe. It's recommended that the general fund pay for the entirety of the HVAC project. Um, so if we did a new cash flow solely focused on the solar project, it will be very black and white. This is cash flow positive pretty much out the gate, uh, with all the, the S-GIP incentives and, um, the IRA, uh, tax, tax incentives that are available right now. So that's, that's what's kind of convoluted in this cash flow tables. Where, where you can see the financial assumptions down there at the bottom, that there's only 1.2 million dollars of capital contribution. Whereas it sounds like it might be more paying for the entirety of the HVAC project. So that, I think that's why we're flip flopping. And related, related to deferred maintenance is, this is a very common, um, thing that, that needs to be analyzed. Um, I, I believe Matt said there's, there's over, on average, 20 maintenance calls, um, related to HVAC system per year. Um, you know, failures and maintenance are very expensive, uh, because they have to be addressed in an emergency fashion. So the deferred maintenance savings are very real numbers. That would be forecasted, um, over the next several years for equipment, uh, replacements and band-aids and fixes, uh, to lift the systems along or replace them in an emergency fashion, including like temporary cooling, temporary heating, things like that. So that's at the, the last year that you see, uh, 2032 would assume that the sys- the entire HVAC system, uh, had been replaced. So that's what the deferred maintenance savings is, that, that money is no longer going to have to be used out of the city, uh, general fund. Or, or some other fund to, to pay for those, those fixes. Um, it's going to be, uh, addressed with a brand new system that we're going to be installing.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Kimball, if there is presumably some kind of cash savings by going with the more expensive program, you know, in the end, why would you still recommend the, the least expensive?
Uh, can you ask that question again?
Sure. If there's supposedly cash savings, you know, at the end of the day with option number one, which is like it's the more expensive program, why would you still recommend option number four?
Option number one requires a significantly higher upfront investment. So basically, we would be draining our, uh, $10 million reserve down to, you know, we would be investing in additional, uh, what is it? Four, can you pull up that, um, that, uh, chart again? Thank you. So, um, we would be investing in additional, uh, this HVAC only looks, um, off. It's, this isn't.
Yeah, it's, it's about 2.3 million additional to add the, the solar PV and battery storage.
Even with the financing option, even though we would be getting financing.
Even though we, but you still have to pay it. So the financing, obviously, it's still, it's still, it's still, uh, you know, you're, you're still paying for it. You're just paying for it, you know, over time.
Right.
And, 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 and with an interest cost. So, so basically we, we will be putting a little bit more, uh, more than a million dollars additional upfront, um, for, for the, uh, which again, would from a, from a cost benefit standpoint, you know, do we, do we want to have that dollar in hand or do we want to, um, you know, put it out? Do we want to basically have it outside of our coffers and then it's not available to use for some other program? Or some other deferred maintenance that's going to be needed next year or the year after?
So, so then, um, let's just say that we did go with option four. What if a month from now, the five of us panic or like we should have gone with option one? Is there any downside or, you know, are we still able to have the same rate and term potentially in a month from now? Or how, how long is this good for? Obviously there's, you know, interest rates could go up. So I, I'm just wondering if we changed our mind and wanted to extend it to a bigger option, I guess what the window is for that.
I will, um, defer to Will Dan on the, uh, the terms of the offer.
Sure. Yeah, so there's, there's a few things, um, there's a few things that most likely will come off the table. Just, just within sort of policy for the, for the solar PV and the battery storage. So, um, Matt had mentioned the self-generation incentive program. Um, those were applied for, uh, over, I think, a year and a half ago. Um, and so the city has, has sort of, um, postponed using them. But, uh, the, the deadline to, um, to secure those, um, which is, I believe, estimated at 420,000, uh, approximately, would, would likely go away for the battery storage. Uh, that program is currently oversubscribed and the city, um, achieved those rebates, uh, under the equity program, which has a significantly higher, um, rebate rate for, um, for per, per, per system size, basically for the battery storage. So that would likely go away or be at a much lower amount. The, on the solar PV side of things, uh, there is, um, you may have heard about it in the news, there's, um, uh, or, you know, the, the industry has been arguing about it for several years now and, and it was just finally, um, announced, uh, about a month ago that, uh, something called net energy metering 3.0, uh, informally called that, is going to go into effect, um, in mid-April of this year. And without getting into the very nitty gritty details, essentially any exported solar PV, um, the value of that would, would go down. So, uh, essentially the, the utilities feel that they've been over, overpaying the, um, constituents that have solar PV for selling power back to the grid. So they're kind of readjusting that. Um, and, uh, so anyway, system sizes and, and generation that, that goes, when it's generating more than the facility's using and sent back to the grid, that value is going down. So, uh, any, anything, you know, five months from now, uh, to, um, you can still sort of, uh, secure legacy rates for the previous environment, um, but you have to submit an interconnection application, so sort of a design, um, by April 15th. So that might, uh, lower.
Sorry, what's the date? That's, that's what I was looking for. You said, you mentioned a date.
Sorry, yeah, April 15th of this year, of 2023.
So if we wanted to go with option four, we would have to decide by April 15th?
I would say that we, we, um, if, 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 if the council wants to go with the full project with the solar, I would make that decision sooner rather than later because in addition to the financing, we obviously need to order everything, the construction. You know, if we wait too long, the construction costs would, would, could potentially change. And the, in the financing, I think these particular terms may expire before April 15th, as far as.
But we don't know, we don't know exactly, because that was kind of like the, that was a question, but.
Yeah, I think, I think Ben was referencing some of the incentives on the cash flow.
Yeah.
I don't know if he was talking about the actual bank terms that were offered, um, with the, so, so Ben, is there the, the actual financing terms? Is there an expiration?
Yeah. Yeah, the financing term expires, um, to finance the entire project. So that's HVAC and solar PV. That, that expires, uh, so that 4.69% rate expires, um, on February 10th, I believe.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, um.
Uh, that was, that was actually my question. You gave me a lot of other nice facts, but that was actually, uh, the question. But it's okay, you know, facts are good. One sec, you said February 10th? Let me just pull up my calendar. Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious in terms of where it coincides with those city council meetings. Um, so I am going to, uh, maybe defer or, uh, deviate a little bit from what staff said. Believe it or not, I'd actually, actually one more question. Are there any points with this interest rate or what are the other fees attached to it? Other than the 4.69%?
Um, I believe there's a small fee for, um, legal fees of maybe $15,000 and I can find that exact number.
15,000?
I could have that wrong. I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, on a two and a half million dollar, uh, issue, though, it's, it's a pretty small.
Sure, yeah, yeah, didn't mean to, for legal fees.
So I would actually probably recommend going with option three. And my rationale, and that is for the HVAC only, uh, fully financed, and my rationale is as follows. First of all, we have a little bit of time to go with the solar panel still, if we decide that we want to go that route. But with regards to the option three, it lets us save, or it, it, uh, we're able to retain an additional, you know, 2.5 you know, 2.5 million dollars in our coffers. Now, if we were to ask, you know, Nick, can you get us a loan, or Mr. Kimball, can you get us a loan to repave more streets? I don't even know if there is any readily available source to do that. But if we're taking out, if we're using, utilizing two, if we're leveraging two and a half million dollars as opposed to taking them out of our general funds or our reserves, that two and a half million dollars can effectively be a loan for streets. And I don't know if that makes sense. Mr. Kimball, I understand, but, but you know, you know, finance through and through. So it's basically a way of saving our money, getting a loan on that money, and just reapplying that money towards streets and other infrastructure projects that we would want to do. So that is my logic in going with option three, although option one is pretty tempting in the sense that it really checks the boxes on a lot of policy objectives that we've had, I mean, for a decade. I just don't know, though, if, you know, if, if the numbers all pan out for it, I'd need to study that a little bit more. So that can, that exhausts my questions and comments on this.
You, Councilmember Solario?
I just have a question in regards to what are the benefits of holding off right now in terms of solar incentives moving forward? It's for Erica and Nick, but they're busy.
Sure. Our rationale was essentially that we believe that the market is changing. And we believe especially as, as a result of some of the things that are changing at the federal level, that there may be some benefits to holding off. Not to mention, again, the notion that was at this time, the most critical project was HVAC at this time. We kind of wanted to hold the line and see what changed with regards to the solar market as that evolution continues to occur. And with the notion of the savings resulting in 420,000 was what we were looking at at the net result. We thought that maybe holding the line would have a little bit more benefit if we were to retain the cash flow at this time.
Thank you. Oh, I'm all done. Thank you.
Councilmember Moltanias?
Okay, so long overdue to get our PB, their HVAC. So I think I'm, I'm good with, you know, just doing the HVAC since that seems to be obviously the highest priority. And it's such an old system and we're having all these failures. So if we can look, explore the financing a little bit more and see, you know, what the total financial impact that would be to allow us, as, Councilmember for hardest said, to not tie up that general fund dollars so we can use it for streets and sidewalks and some of the basics that, you know, maintaining our parks. I would be open to looking at that option, but definitely going with the HVAC. I think that's, that's perfect.
Thank you, Councilmember Moltanias. Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Well, I really had my heart set on going solar. I really did. I was like really excited about that. And you have put in such a great amount of, of work and time into developing this project for us. I do have a couple of other comments. Is there any maintenance when you get the solar, on, on the solar panels?
There is. And those costs are incorporated into the cash flow as well. But it's relatively minor. You know, there's essentially, it's mostly preventative maintenance. So the O and M fees typically cover, like monitoring, so 24-hour monitoring, remote monitoring of the system to ensure that inverter strings aren't going out or it's operating as it should. The, the preventative maintenance is usually in the form of one to two annual visits a year to check for any damage or signs of, of wear and tear or with the, it's, it's, you know, mostly electrical equipment, right? So looking for any signs of something not, not being quite right. And then panel cleaning, so strategically, once, maybe, maybe twice a year, providing, you know, literally just washing the panels. They get dirty over the course of the year, especially if it's wildfire season. So and then that, that kind of skiers them and makes the generation from them deteriorate. So, yeah, that's, that's what's typically involved. The battery storage similarly is pretty low maintenance. It's actually mostly, again, preventative maintenance system checking of, of sort of reports of how it's performing. But most of it is actually ensuring that the small HVAC system to keep it climate controlled because it has to be within a certain range of temperature and that's built into the system. So ensuring that's maintained, cleaning the air filters, et cetera.
And the, the system that, you know, if we just go with the HVAC, what benefits do we have of just, is it a better system? How is it better from what we currently have?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, I can cover some of that briefly. So, you know, the current HVAC system is, is a, is not really functioning properly. As I think we've discussed, and I know the council has discussed at the last meeting. So I don't think it was ever really designed to handle the added loads and occupancy changes that have happened. So it's also well past its useful life. Typically, you know, useful life is 20 years for an HVAC system. For, for that type of HVAC system, they're, they're well over that. So this, this one is also a lot more efficient. So it's a variable refrigerant flow and direct dedicated outdoor air system. So essentially, it decouples sort of the water side and the air side. And it's just much more efficient. It's going to be the right size for, for the, for the rooms and the building and the different zones within the room, within the building, and it'll just improve comfort and reduce maintenance. It's also going to, for those, those cooling loads, make them all, all electric. So the natural gas is going to be used for, for domestic hot water, but not for the HVAC in, in, in those, those areas.
Thank you. And our current, you know, as in reading the information, and I think it's important for those that are listening, you know, the system was, our current system at the PD is, was built in 1988. Yeah. And it has five units and we're going down to two units with this, right? So I think that's, that's really good. And, you know, I think what's, what's good is that we are able to make this a solar project later on. It doesn't necessarily have to be done at the same time they, they put in the, the, the system at this time, correct? There shouldn't be any difference or if we put that in, if we decide five years from now, we want to go solar because there's incentives?
Yeah, we could explore other incentive programs at that time, other options, other funding options that might be available at the state or federal level over time. That's something that we can explore at a future date.
So solar can always be, since it was designed with a solar component, if at a future date, something changes and, you know, federal funding comes down for solar panels, right? And makes it cheap. They can always be added to, you know, we could always add them later because it's sort of designed to at least accommodate, accommodate that. It'll still obviously require additional design work in that at a later date. But it's not like if we don't do solar tonight, we will never do solar there at that. I mean, it can, it can always be a future option.
And if you could just, on here on page 173 and 174, there's the last lines here, and I don't know for the, those that are listening, but the total amount here of, on the last column on page 173, it's 190,397. That's the savings if we go solar, correct? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
That is for the full scope project. Yes, the solar, battery storage and HVAC. The total net savings over the life of the project, 25 years, is 190,397 dollars.
And then versus the page 174 for the total amount of 144,962?
For the HVAC only project, that's correct.
Which is a difference of about 45,735. So that's the only amount of, I mean, there's not a, it's not a big difference if we go HVAC only or solar and HVAC, right?
Yeah, and I would note that most of that net savings for both of those projects is in the last five years. So you're looking at basically the, the, it's positive cash flow in the first number of years. It's negative cash flow in the last 20 years. And then like, or the last, the, the, I think the first 10 years is positive cash flow, the next 10 years is negative cash flow. So we really only, it only really breaks even in the last couple of years. So in 2044 through 2047, so we'd be spending a lot more money today to save $40,000 20, 20 years from now.
Yeah, it's not a big difference. And there may be incentives, like you said.
Right, which is some of the basis for, for staff's recommendation.
And, you know, in the past, when we like, do like budget and things like that, we discuss the city's rating. What is our current rating in terms of our finances?
You mean like a bond rating?
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't maintain a, a regular, just a rating. We have ratings that are particular to certain bond issues, which we've, where you sort of like the A minus, the lower As. When it comes to just a general rating, when you do any sort of debt issue, you get rated based on the merits of that particular debt issue, not, there's not just a general, what is the city rated? I think we're rated A plus, 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 but that's my opinion. I'm not a rating. But, but obviously, things like what you have, your cash balance, your reserve balance are always very significantly, they're looked at pretty significantly by rating agencies, by banks that are doing a financial analysis whenever you're trying to either borrow funds. I will say, I could go on all night talking about our finance ratings, so I'll just, this will be the last thing. You know, for, up until two years ago, we were on the top, the, the state auditor controllers' top test 10 list of most financially distressed cities in California. San Gabriel is actually on that now. But we, we are no longer, we are no longer top 10. We're like number 70 something. And, and after this year, that's based on 2021's financial data. After 2022 financial data, we're going to drop even lower on that list. So, so we're in a much better position because we have a reserve, because of making kind of smarter decisions.
So based on those smart decisions that you've made in the past, then I, I support option number four, where we pay it in full, like go for the HVAC and pay it in full. If there's a loan that's needed in the future, such as for slurry seal or for repairing our streets, then we decide as a council, we want to do a loan. Then let's do it later rather than right now because we don't know when. There's no project in place for repairing of a, a major repair of any of our streets right now, other than the clearance slurry seal. So that's my recommendation. Hold off on getting a loan and consider it for, possibly even, I don't know, but for repairing a street, our streets. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also support staff's recommendation and Mayor Mendoza's recommendation that we fund the HVAC in full with the general funds. In a previous deliberation, we talked a bit about having a healthy rainy day fund. And I think of it in the literal sense, we're, we're not talking about a rainy day. We're talking about a really hot valley day in a building that hasn't been updated for over 30 years that impacts both our staff and our equipment. And so I think it's vital that we respond to this really critical capital need and address this deferred maintenance. I'd like to add, though, that I do think it's important that in addition to foreseeing potential incentives and support for financing for solar in the future, that we take proactive steps to advocate for that. So in the future, when we discuss our legislative priorities, I think it's important that we include whatever might already be starting to bake for advocacy or other advocacy coalitions or something that we can offer ourselves. Do we have any other council comments or questions?
Yes. And I might have asked this question before, but if I can just get maybe like a, a simple number as opposed to a lot of facts. But if we did go the finance route, what would be the total interest paid? Like over the course of the 20 years, assuming there's no prepayment?
Ben, Will Dan, you, you did the, I believe it's on here, but if you can come up with the total interest.
Yeah, I believe it's the total, sorry, for the full scope of projects, is that, is that right?
Just the HVAC.
Just the HVAC. With the current. Just looking through this. Okay, yeah, let me just calculate that number. Yeah, so the total, the total loan payment, or yeah, someone else has it. It's just. So with, yeah, so in that last, that last cash flow, the, the total loan repayment is 3.821 million. And the total financed amount is, is 2.44 million. So the interest on that is about 1.3 million, 1.4 billion. So it's the difference between, yeah, that 3.8 billion in the total column for the total repayment and the, in the, in the table below that says total financed with TELP. I'm sorry, I had to take out the general funds contribution.
So it's an amortized loan, then? So my, my mortgage calculator is working correctly. That's what I have too, so approximately that range. So, and again, the only reason I think that we should maybe consider the finance option, I guess it can be done later. It's that, for example, we can't take out just a loan for streets. So this is basically replacing that money. For me, I think it'd be helpful if we actually had a list of other projects that we need to be financed, that need to be financed. Or even the list of prepaying some of our outstanding retiree, retiree health obligation. When I served on the ad hoc committee, I remember that for every dollar we pre, we prepay, we are earning a very large amount back. It's something like over half a percent. So for every million dollars that we spend on prepaying, we save about $500,000 or more, something to that effect. But assuming that we do go with option number four today, we still have time up until that February date, correct, to say that we'd rather finance it? This doesn't necessarily tie us. Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, so that's a, right. I, I guess if we're just doing the HVAC, we could certainly come back and look at financing the outside. I mean, as long as the project is still being constructed, you typically can, can still look at financing and then reimburse yourself. So that would, that would continue to be a possibility for up and through the February 10th date, yeah.
So given what I've stated, do you still think that option four is the best option, given that we don't have a resource for loans, for streets, or for prepaying outstanding obligations?
So it, it's, it's kind of a, so it's, that, that's sort of the cost benefit analysis you're always doing, right? So if we finance, you know, it is still going to be a, a full two and a half million dollar liability on our, on our books. And so we'll, it will draw down our, our available reserve balance. We will have more cash. I mean, we will certainly have more cash in the bank for, for, for a while. But ultimately, that, having more cash today, so having two, two and a half million dollars in cash today will cost us 1.3 million dollars in interest cost over the next 20 years. Or I believe that was the number he said. So, you know, is it, is it worth paying all of that, that extra, that extra interest cost? Now, a lot of times you, you, you can, you can, you charge it when you don't have enough money to pay for it, right? So we had looked at that in the past. And I understand the, what, what you were proposing before does make a certain amount of sense in that. There, there are financing options for streets, but they're more like traditional bond options, which are very expensive from an issuance standpoint. They, they, they cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to issue bonds. So, so this would be cheaper, a cheaper way to finance that and keep cash with us so that if we did want to, you know, look at putting extra cash now toward streets, that would be available in the coffer. So, so that is certainly a finance technique that we could be using. This is technically cheaper money than a traditional like bonding for streets. So, you know, that. So you know, that, from a staff standpoint, we tend to be conservative and just say like, you know, if we have the money, let's avoid the interest cost. However, uh, even if we were option C and we were to finance it, um, it's relatively, relatively cheap to, this type of financing is cheap. It's direct to the bank placement, as opposed to going through a bond issue, which is very expensive. Um, so if we were to keep that money in a, in our coffers, and then over the next few years, it would be cash available potentially to use on other capital type improvements.
Right, and if you came back and said, look, if we, we, if we prepay our retiree, uh, you know, health, which we have, you know, multimillion dollar deficit on still, and we're going to save two million dollars, sure, we pay one point three, but we're saving two million dollars, so we're still saving seven hundred thousand dollars. My recommendation would be if the city council doesn't want to make a decision on a loan yet, we would still have a little bit of time, you know, let's try to get some, some of these agenda items off the books and, you know, maybe pass option number four, but still ask staff to look into bringing back, uh, you know, what it would look like to use that money in other ways, because this is a rare opportunity where we actually have a pretty low interest rate loan, uh, that can allow us to apply two and a half million dollars to something else. If we're sitting here and saying, we don't know what we would apply it to, I'd probably say there's a heck of a lot of things out there that, where we could really use that money um, with an opportunity that might not come around again. And maybe Will Dan can even, you know, go back to the lender and say, look, they're very likely going to go all cash. This is the offer that you gave us for four point six nine. Do you want to sweeten the deal a little bit? You know, they stand to make over a million dollars on this, so if they're gonna bring down the interest rate a little bit to incentivize us, you know, so be it. If they're not, then we just make a decision based on the facts. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from, because again, this is a potential opportunity for us to leverage, you know, very inexpensive money. That concludes.
If there are another, no other comments or questions, we can open up public comments. Madam Clerk, are there any public testimonies submitted?
There were no public testimonies submitted.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I will now close the public comment portion and ask council if you have any additional comments or questions.
So I will move to close the public testimony portion of the pu- public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Padilla?
Well, since there's literally no one commenting, it is sufficient for the, for the chair to simply ask if there's objection, I mean, if you want to go through the formality of doing a motion.
No idea. Okay.
So I, I think.
Yeah, unless you're objecting, we just close public comments.
Correct, yeah.
All right, well, that's fine then. I'll make a motion when you're ready for motions, but I'll let you make your rounds first.
Does anyone have any additional comments or questions before we close the public hearing? Hearing none. Do I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
We're voting on an option though.
No, we're not.
Just to close the public hearing. Now, now you're closing the public hearing and then you will entertain motions.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez? Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
We can now entertain any motions?
All right, so I will move to um, approve item number seven uh, with option number four as presented by staff. However, with the additional direction, that staff will come forward um, before February tenth with a more detailed summary of the financing costs uh, for option three, in addition to ways that that money could be utilized.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll take one more round of any comments or questions from council. Councilmember Montañez or Solorio, do you have any additional comments or questions? Staff, for the record, will you, you re-articulate what this motion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so, so the, at this point, if you want to deliberate on the motion, that, that's appropriate. But if there's no desire to deliberate further on the motion, you can then proceed to the vote on the motion.
Yes, there doesn't seem to be any other considerations, but I do want to allow staff an opportunity to clarify what the motion is.
I just want to clarify if, if the motion inclu- has the staff coming back to council to actually make a present, if it's, if that's a, an item being presented to council, um, which has the um, more detailed uh, analysis of the financing and then other.
That is correct. I don't, I don't anticipate it'll be as long as this, it'll be much shorter, but it'll at least give us one last option to see if we want to use that, uh, that inexpensive mon-, you know, that inexpensive money for something else.
Does staff have clarity? Okay. With no other comments or questions for deliberation, I'll now turn it over to the clerk for a roll call on the motion.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. The motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is administrative reports. Item number seven is consideration to award a construction contract for phase two of the annual restreet resurfacing project. Mr. Baumgartner, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I do have a couple of slides to, to recap uh, this, this item as well.
Can we take a quick recess before we dive into this item? We'll take five minutes. Thank you. For, um, I know that we are about to dive into our administrative reports now that public hearing is over. However, because we have um, multiple contractors here to speak on items, if there are no objections, I would like to move up item eight and nine to happen prior to item seven. Hearing no objection.
For eight and nine, sorry, can you just say what they are?
Yes, so um, I'm, I apologize. Thank you for asking that. Um, I'd like to move up nine and ten. Uh, nine is consideration to award a professional services agreement to Pacoima Beautiful, who's here today. And also number ten is consideration to award a professional services agreement to RJM Design Group for the design of Las Palmas Revitalization Project.
Well, as mayor, you have unilateral authority, but um, I would recommend doing number nine next. And then I would think that number seven is important, because we actually have someone in the audience here for that too. And I would say to do number ten after, but it's up to you since you're mayor, so I'll defer to you.
I would note that we do also have um, RJM, we also have someone from, from number ten, of the vendor from number ten is also, RJM.
So I've consulted with staff and I'd like to move forward with item number nine next. And then following will be item ten and we'll circle back to item seven. Are there any objections? If none, we'll move forward. So now we're taking up item number nine, consideration to award a professional services contract to Pacoima Beautiful. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will turn this over to Parks and Recreation Director, uh, Julian Venegas. Actually, it's Recreation Community Services. Parks isn't even in your dr- your title, so I apologize for that.
Happens a lot.
Thank you very much. Uh, Nick, thanks for that. Um, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to make a presentation for, uh, first, the, uh, Pacoima Beautiful Community Engagement Plan. I have a few slides here that I'd like to go over. It's uh, Community Engagement Services, consideration to approve a professional service agreement uh, to Pacoima Beautiful. That's forward? Oh, okay. Okay. Let me go back then. I gotta go back from the start. Okay, uh, we'll start with the background. Um, on February sixteenth, uh, the department, uh, submit, which includes funding for a plan development, design, construction, and construction documents. On June sixth, uh, staff circulated a notice inviting bids for community engagement and design of the Las Palmas Re- uh, Revitalization Project. Six firms responded, uh, and three firms were invited to an interview, so we could better gauge their qualifications. Six firms responded and three firms were invited to an interview so we could better gauge their qualifications. On the 19th of September, staff made a proposal to award a PSA for the community engagement and design services to RJM. RJM, excuse me. The city council paused awarding the professional service agreement until a more robust community engagement effort could be defined. On October 4th, staff released a request for proposals for community engagement services to gather input for the residents and stakeholders of the Las Palmas Revitalization Project and the Pioneer Park Playground renovation project. Staff was seeking community engagement services for two projects. For the Las Palmas Revitalization Project, which will include renovation of playground, adding ADA accessibility and shading, a basketball court with lighting, construction of a new tennis/pickleball court with lighting, constructions of a new splash pad, renovation of three baseball fields with lighting, renovation of the concession stand, renovation of the outside restrooms, construction of a new multipurpose field with lighting, renovation of the outdoor exercise equipment, renovation of the picnic shelters and walking path lighting, construction of new landscaping throughout the park, and renovation of the rec center, learning center, and including the two patio restrooms. The Pioneer Park Playground renovation will include ADA accessibility playground equipment, shading, and an outdoor exercise equipment area. The initial request for proposal released on October 4th did not receive any responses. So staff reached out to three local community-based organizations. They were Pacoima Beautiful, Pueblo and Salud, Inc., and the San Fernando Valley Partnership, Inc. Only Pacoima Beautiful responded to the RFP. Interview process was conducted to determine the scope of the service. The panel included the director, myself, and the assistant to the city manager. The scope of the community services will include the major, the majority of the community engagement workload would be related to the Las Palmas Project, which involves a complete makeover of the outdoor recreational features and some interior renovations. The Pioneer Park Playground renovation, which is a much smaller project and will include the playground and outdoor exercise equipment renovations. Staff anticipate that Pacoima Beautiful will focus most of their energy on Las Palmas Park with an 80/20 split between Las Palmas and Pioneer. Both projects require Pacoima Beautiful to work closely with a selected design firm and the city to ensure that the community's voice is heard during the design phase. Pacoima Beautiful will lead the face-to-face interaction with the public, hosting community meetings, pop-ups, and interviewing key stakeholders. The approach the community Pacoima will take to garner feedback will be door-to-door outreach, community events and pop-ups, digital outreach, surveys, community meetings, meetings with city staff, interviewing key stakeholders. The budget impact will include a $705,830 that is allocated for pre-construction costs from the Las Palmas Grant and $372,905 for the Pioneer Park Playground. These funds can be used towards the community engagement. The cost will be split between the Las Palmas Project and the Pioneer Project at an 80/20 split, roughly $40,000 to $20,000. Funding for both projects has been incorporated in the city's adopted fiscal year 2022-2023 budget in the capital improvement appropriation. This is a table, I'm sorry for the low view of this table, but this is our, the funding sources. The statewide park program has $705,830. The per capita grant, which is another state grant, Prop 68, has $192,905. And the Los Angeles County Measure A has $180,000 allocated for these projects for a total of $1,258,735 towards pre-construction costs. The uses would be $490,000, $12100 for the design, $40,000 for the Las Palmas Community Engagement Project or Segment, and $110,000 for the Pioneer Park Community Engagement Project. I am open for any questions. I do recommend that we provide or we award the professional service agreement to Pacoima Beautiful. If you have any questions, I'm free to answer them, and also Pacoima Beautiful staff is here. We have Veronica, Philip, and Natalie, I'm sorry, Natalie here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. We'll begin with Councilmember Farado.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for coming out, Pacoima Beautiful. I didn't recognize any of you. I thought you were all college students, you know, quite literally. Had I known that you were waiting here, I think that the whole council probably would have wanted you to go first. So I'm sorry you had to wait for two and a half hours for a mere $50,000. But it looks like the city did the right, took the right course of action by putting out an RFP. You're obviously eminently well-qualified. I will let you know that some of the homes in the area are very hard to get feedback from because they're gated. You know, in some neighborhoods, about two-thirds of the homes are gated with dogs. So there's gonna be, I'm sure that you'll, I'm sure that there're gonna be many more homes that you wished you had reached, but I know that you're gonna try your hardest to reach out to everyone. And I would be happy to send you a video that I did this summer with some improvements that need to be done in the park. I mean, there's an open electrical, you know, junction box that's been open for like 10 years that someone could stick their hand into. That's, you know, being kept together by duct tape. There's a chain link fence that could have taken five minutes to fix, but it's been, you know, left abandoned for a decade. And so there's a lot of great recommendations I think that you can come forward with. I'll send you my list and I wish you the best of luck in your outreach. And if you need any help from me, feel free to let me know.
Councilmember Solario.
So Las Palmas Park or the park in general are very dear to my heart. I live right across the street from Las Palmas Park and I grew up going there. When I was little, I actually used to get splinters from the old, old park because there was wooden structures. So I love how it looks now and I know it's gonna look a lot more beautiful. So thank you so much, Pacoima Beautiful, for investing in this project and taking your time. Councilmember Farado is correct. I do live on a gated house right across the street, but my gate is a little heavy, but come knock or you let me know how I can provide support. I would love to, but again, thank you so much.
Councilmember Montañez.
Oh, so wonderful. Another great project that the city's gonna do. It's great to have Veronica, the whole team, Pacoima Beautiful, helping us out with the outreach. Include us in so we could do, you know, community walks together with the council. We could obviously go reach out to the seniors and all the programs that we have there. Walking door-to-door would be, you know, fun to do with all of you. And then going to the sports teams, the baseball teams, like they all have, you know, really good ideas of what needs to be done there. And then, you know, you do a great job of always making sure that we do everything bilingual. And, you know, that's obviously a very high Spanish-speaking neighborhood, but, I mean, you know, obviously how to work our community. And then would love to participate in like, you know, helping connect you to key stakeholders and community members. So if there's like a community ad hoc or something like that, or a council ad hoc that gets established, I'd love to be a part of it. It's a very special park, means a lot to us, and it really is kind of the center of a lot of our activity town. So I fully support this, you know, this agreement and really look forward to designing a truly incredible park that has a lot of history and meaning to those of us that grew up on the south side.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Thank you, Pacoima Beautiful, for coming out. It's such a pleasure to be able to have this opportunity to work with you and having you learn also about our city. You know, we just love it here and that's why I think we're all here as council members. But, you know, I want to welcome you, not until we approve the project, but anyway, it's great. Our neighbors are gonna work with us and help us out on this. I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to get to know each other, and I plan to get to know you a little better. I also have, you know, I work with a lot of the seniors. We have a large senior program here in the city and, you know, I can connect you with that. Or Julian with the meetings, they have a monthly meeting. And the nutrition program and other senior exercise programs. And they have a great deal of input that they can provide you with and a lot of good suggestions that will also help them with their particular needs as well. And also just want to put out that paralelo of a sissy retreat that's right on the other side of Las Palmas, there's a block wall. They also have some needs, so if you could reach out to them, I'd really appreciate that. Sister Mary Jesus is also very vocal and, you know, can let you know what her needs are in terms of how the park relates to the retreat house. And that's all I have. I'm supportive of approving this contract. Thank you.
I'm incredibly excited. I think staff knows. I've repeatedly answered that this contract to redevelop our park include community outreach formally as part of the contract. And I just want to thank staff for being responsive to that. We wanted to ensure that we had a bilingual, community-based organization that could truly do robust, effective, sincere outreach so we could get feedback from the community that this is intended to serve. So we are all, as you can see, very excited for your partnership. I do want to recognize that prior to this, there was some effort by our recreation staff to get some feedback from the community. So I want to recognize that they are our frontline at the parks, they are trusted messengers. So that's an additional group of people that you could leverage as part of your outreach strategy. And also to the comments about current maintenance of the parks, I know that I've taken multiple walks with Mr. Baumgartner regarding certain things that we could fix incrementally without waiting for this investment of funds in the park. And so I would like to welcome any initial feedback that you do have on those smaller items so that we can work to improve them now because our community deserves the best parks at any moment in time. And this is a beautiful opportunity to invest $4 million. But until we get there and do this project with a designer, we'd love to hear the feedback from the community about what we can do immediately. If there are no other questions or comments by council, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second.
I have a question for Mr. Padilla. Mr. Padilla, I made a video this summer, it's about 15 minutes. Am I allowed to send it to the council? Would that appear to be a Brown Act violation? That I'm trying to get some kind of consensus outside of a meeting in terms of what updates we should do? I just kind of go over a list of things that need to be done at the park?
Well, I mean, I would have to sort of see.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I just, it's hard to understand its tone or.
No worries. That being said, I will move the item.
And what I would suggest, not only for you, Councilmember Farado, but for all council members that may have, actually, the best course of action would be to get those to, well, if we, assuming that RJM, that you approve the next contract, get those to our design firm because all of those items can be incorporated into the design. And also send it to myself and Mr. Baumgartner if there's small maintenance things. Because those, and all the design elements that any council would want to have feedback on should go directly to the design team so that they're the third party because ultimately a design will come back to council to deliberate in open session.
I was more so thinking in terms of what Mayor Rodriguez said, which is that there's some really small items. Like there's literally electrical that a kid can just stick their hands into. There's, you know, trash cans that are crushed on both sides. There's like some really easy fixes that can be done, so I'll send that document.
Please send that to me and Matt and we can.
And I'd like to invite all of council to take a walk at Las Palmas because some of those trash cans we've actually replaced already. And so I think it's important that we all just kind of get a refreshed look and look at those little things that we might not notice to give feedback to Nick and Matt, especially about any liability issues that concern the health or safety of our community.
So I move item number eight, stated in the agenda. Sorry, item number nine is stated in the agenda.
Can I ask on the timeline, Julian, if you could kind of review the timeline again? When do we start the outreach and the project?
What's gonna happen is that the selected design firm, hopefully it'll be RJM, and Pacoima Beautiful will meet to have an initial discussion of what the outreach is gonna look like, how we're gonna set up the meetings, and then start, we're thinking of at the latest, maybe the third week of January.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna get going to us. All right, and then I mean, I still have that recommendation if we want to do a council ad hoc or a community. Maybe it's not a council ad hoc, but a community advisory council or something just to, I think, allow for this formalized process of submitting these requests so that it's going through, you know, a centralized process for like request, feedback, items that need to be, that can be approved now, and then visioning and all that. But I would, I second the motion, you know, with that possibility. I think once we get the consultants on board, then we could go through the timeline then.
So there's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Councilmember Farado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez? Councilmember Montañez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you for being here, Pacoima Beautiful. We'll now go to item 10, consideration to award a professional services agreement to RJM Design Group, Inc. for the design of the Las Palmas Park Revitalization Project. Staff?
Okay, I do have another presentation that is basically the same in the beginning. I'll just go over some highlights regarding the recommended firm to do the design. Okay, I do want to highlight why we did recommend selecting RJM as a design firm. They provided a detailed explanation how the firm planned to meet the city's needs. Their vision of the project based on strong community engagement was very well-defined. The relative project experience, qualifications of their staff, and the approach and methodology towards the project, and also the proposed cause of design. RJM would also do so, will work with Pacoima Beautiful to make sure the community engagement is fully developed and we get the ideas from the community and incorporate them into the final design of the project. RJM will provide technical renderings, site plans, and produce a primary and final project design. They are also gonna build a dedicated website for the project where the community could voice those needs that they see and we could definitely look at them and filter them out through that dedicated site. And they will also help with developing online surveys and provide a pre-recorded video, updates, illustrated plan improvements, and share 3D visualizations of the project in its progress. Okay, we know that. Okay, then I did mention all the projects that the Las Palmas is tend to renovate. Okay, then I did mention all the projects that the Las Palmas is tend to renovate, they're here listed again. This is a grant design concept, which was actually submitted to the state for the funding, and these were what we believe we wanted to do. The funding for the, the, the contract comes from, again, from the state. The total amount of the grant was $4,234,980. The pre-construction cost is $490,171. And the, of that, I mean, in addition to $40,000 for the community engagement, and for the construction would be 307, three, where is that? Is that 3 million? No, I think I got that wrong. I must put a wrong number there, but it's 3,703. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that is the construction, total construction cost of 3,703 with $449. So those are the funding for the project. Staff does recommend that we award the professional service agreement to RJM for the design of the Las Palmas Revitalization Project. I have any questions, I'm happy to answer, and also Zachary from RJM is here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you for being here. I'll now open it up for council comments. Councilmember Farado?
I move the item.
Councilmember Solorio?
No comment.
Councilmember Montañez?
Just have a question on the restrooms, the patio restrooms, those are accessible to the baseball fields, right?
No, the patio restrooms are in that middle quad of the building, that open area that's inside the community center.
So what about the restrooms for the fields?
Those will be also renovated, those are part of the concession stand.
Okay, so the existing ones will be renovated. And then, a little bit of a, you know, not to over-design with the, you know, adding these multi-purpose fields, like really try to protect the baseball fields as much as possible, so engaging the baseball teams, I think is really important. We have obviously a lot of really good baseball players in town, and I don't want to, want to make sure that they have like the appropriate facilities. And that one seems like the, that multi-purpose field may be turned into a soccer field. And so we should look for different locations and really try to design this properly, so that we're, we are encouraging, you know, existing sports programs that are there. Is that, is that a possibility? You know, Julian, are you set on having that?
Yeah, everything's a possibility right now, we're in the design phase, those are recommendations we could look at, and when we start really looking seriously at what we want to do with the park, so we could definitely note your comments.
And I would just mention, oh, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Montez, just mention that we had to submit sort of a baseline rendering just for grant proposal. We are not in any way locked into that. They did, you know, it's a much more flexible grant now that we're, it's been awarded, so yeah, all of those, all these design, we still have a lot of freedom on the design. You know, some of the basic elements need to be there, but we can certainly incorporate all these comments and make changes. That's the purpose of making sure we get robust community feedback.
Thank you. I think, I think there was a second, if not, then I'll second the motion.
I don't believe there was a second.
No, thank you for your second. I'm going to allow council to complete their comments, and then we'll go for a vote. Thank you.
I have a question regarding, let me see. Just my mind. Well, I'm supportive of the project, but, I don't know what it was.
If you want a moment, Vice Mayor, I have a quick question.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, clearly, there's a lot of ideas for the way we're going to be facilitating feedback and the overall design of the park. Can you clarify, and it was in your presentation, that in your scope of work, you'll be preparing the materials for public outreach? Since you're both present, could you help us understand the role of each of you? Will you be doing the first, for example, the renderings that are then provided at community meetings? And I mentioned that because of your comment, Mr. City Manager, when there were previous efforts to get some initial feedback from the community, the renderings with the initial baseline concepts were included and really got in the way of ideation for our community, and I think a blank slate actually is more helpful, so can you clarify your role versus the like community expert role?
Well, I love that question, because a picture is worth a thousand words, and once you launch a picture, everybody has an idea already on that, you're absolutely right. So what we'll do, working in tandem with Pacoima Beautiful, I've read through their scope and that what they're going to be proposing, and really, as we go through it, we're going to make sure that it's exactly as you mentioned, a very robust, sincere effort to get community involvement, and how you get that community involvement is through a lot of visuals, but carefully prepared, so that way we, we don't provide the wrong idea or concept upfront, start to really narrow people's ideas in. We want them to have fresh, creative ideas that are theirs, and they bring to the table. So we'll be preparing exhibits, opportunities, constraints, everything that Julian had mentioned during his presentation earlier. We'll prepare a lot of those exhibits digitally, we'll work with Pacoima Beautiful on how we transmit that to the community, how we develop it, and how we go through a step-by-step process to collect their input in a meaningful way. So that way, it's not just, here's the picture, what do you think? But it's an actual dialogue between the community and staff and the design team.
Thank you. My only other comment is that while we're providing feedback of our thoughts of how to go about this, you know, there are a lot of groups that currently utilize the park, and some that I think sometimes don't get as recognized as like a normal recreational activity, like our roller derby girls are very interested in getting involved, so ensuring that our department, which I'm sure you're already going to do, is providing information on all the permitting that happens, and then, of course, like everyone said, this is a baseball town, and as a baseball mom, I'm happy to help you connect with that community as well. Vice Mayor Mendoza?
You know, I was wondering, I don't know if I missed it, but the timeline for part of these processes, just, I know you don't have anything solid, but just an idea of the outreach, and how you're, you know, you're going to conduct this.
Well, initially, what we are going to do first is Pacoima Beautiful and RGM and the city will meet and discuss the outreach plan, how that community engagement is going to look like, what we want to do. So we do have to strategize as how we're going to develop that particular program. And we're anticipating that that meeting will take place around the third week of January, and then from there, we could definitely develop a more robust timeline for the project. The design phase usually takes three to six months to formalize a concrete initial design. Staff and council will have opportunity to get input, but that design is going to be based on the community outreach and the ideas we got from there. And then, so that the whole design project, when it's completed, I anticipate anywhere from six to eight months.
Sounds good, thank you. The other thing is, you know, like when you're going to have your presentations or doing outreach meetings with the community, if you could just kind of let us know, I like to attend some of that stuff, stay here with the residents, have to say, just keep us posted on that, and I look forward to moving forward with this, so.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions before voting? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk? Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez? Councilmember Montañez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you all for being here and answering our questions. We'll now move on to item number seven, consideration to award a construction contract for Phase Two of the annual street resurfacing project. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And it looks like we're working on bringing up our presentation right now. Just, just to give you an idea, this was an item that we brought forward back in, at our December 5th meeting. We actually, at that time, were discussing reducing the scope of the original Phase Two project, which was roughly 12 miles of streets, down to six miles of streets, because the bids that came in were considerably higher than what we were expecting, and that's just been the case throughout this year with a lot of our projects, and not just the city, but a lot of other cities. But just as a recap, staff, last year, staff worked on developing a plan to resurface approximately 30 miles of streets in the city, which is roughly 60% of our streets. And that's using the funds that we had available, some funds that were, that hadn't been used for a couple of years, plus our approximate allocation that we get each year of about $2 million from the state and county funds. So that was broken up into two phases. The Phase One is more of a preservation technique, and we identified a number of streets that are in fair to good condition, that are good candidates for doing a preservation technique. It is a step that we have not been doing much in the city over the last couple of decades, and one of the reasons why a lot of our streets have gotten into the condition that they're in. So ideally, with Phase One, you want to doing a traditional preservation slurry seal, you want to be doing crack sealing and staying on top of keeping that top surface sealed up, so that water can't get into the cracks, open them up, cause deterioration in potholes. So that is the intention of identifying many miles in the street that we can actually stay on top of preserving and keeping those streets from getting worse. Phase Two is 12 miles, and these are streets that would typically be candidates for more robust overlay or a full rebuild of streets that have just gotten to the point that they're deteriorated quite poorly. But there are, have been a lot of techniques in play and used across the state by many municipalities, doing what's called a two or a three-step slurry seal process, and I'll go over that a little bit more in a bit. Phase Two bids, as I was saying, came in about twice over the, our original engineer's estimate, and so at December 5th meeting, we presented a new scope, a reduced scope. However, council directed staff at that time to keep the original scope and return at this meeting with some funding options, which Erica will go over here shortly. Staff looked at a number, as part of that, staff looked at a number of our available capital funds, which we'll present in that table. Again, looking at Phase One versus Phase Two, at 18 miles of preservation, the scope involved crack sealing, doing a lot of concrete work, new street markings, so once the streets are covered in slurry seal, we would come back and do lane markings, you know, new stop, you know, stop markings, legend signs, pothole repairs, as well as address number markings on all of the homes that are in the affected area. Phase Two slurry is 12 miles, roughly 12 miles, and that's a two- and three-step process. And so this is essentially a way of coming along, filling in with the first course of what we call a leveling course of slurry seal, then putting a flexible slurry seal layer on top of that, that would be the two-step process. The three-step process were for some of our worst streets, you'd come and you'd put a third layer of slurry seal on top of that. This has been very successful in working with streets and communities where there's not a lot of funding available, getting the streets up to a fairly good drivable standard. And in a lot of these areas across the state, the two- and three-step process has basically rejuvenated rather poorer roads into roads that can be used for anywhere between seven and 15 years. Part of this project includes also doing some concrete work, as well as the new street markings, address markings, and pothole repairs. And again, we were directed to come back with what available funding there is, and I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Finance now, Erica Melton, to kind of discuss those options for potential funding.
In terms of this project, we had budgeted originally $4.6 million out of Measure R, Measure M, Senate Bill One, and the state gas tax. All of these are special revenue funds that are specifically dedicated towards street, transportation, road improvement projects. So these are, again, all special revenue capital project funds that are dedicated towards that. So we were looking at all of the available balances based off of what we had from prior year, after we looked at our available fund balances after we closed the year. In terms of the total project, after, again, we went out to bid and got back the total, we were much higher than we expected with a deficit of 1.9 million approximately. In terms of potential fund sources, what we were looking at were, again, we went back over all of our special funds to see what balances remained in each of those accounts. Again, each of those accounts that were dedicated, capital project funds towards specifically road and transportation projects, we were able to identify about $440,000 that was available. That still left a bit of a deficit, which we are recommending use of ARPA funds, in part because the remaining ARPA balance, which is $1,7232, has to be spent by 2024. Given the fact that, again, this is a one-time community project, again, that's part of our recommendation, there was still an additional gap, in concert with the fact that, again, of that 1.9 million, we wanted to make sure that there was room for some additional, if change orders came about, so we wanted to make sure that there was additional contingency available. So we rounded that up to 2 million, which, again, left that balance of about $550,000 that we recommend using some of the general fund reserves from. Again, we would still maintain a healthy balance in the general fund reserves, and that would tie up the full balance in order for this project to be pursued. That concludes staff recommendations. We welcome your questions at this time.
And if I may, just to reiterate, so we have total reserves of $10 million in the general fund. The, our minimum reserve requirement per policy is about $4 million, it's 20% of our recurring expenditures, so that left us at about $6 million, that's above, basically general fund reserve, that's above what our minimum policy is. I just want to remind you that we just appropriated 2.5 million of that 6 million, so that would bring us down to 3.5 million, still pretty healthy above what our minimum requirement is. So if we use another half million of general funds, that will be a total of 3 million that we've appropriated today at general funds, which will take us down to about a $7 million total reserve, but still leaves us about $3 million above what our minimum reserve requirement is. So I just wanted to, just to make sure that we have, you know, we think about both of those items that we've discussed tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Farado?
Well, if we need more funds, I know where we can get a 2.5 million dollar loan at 4.69%, so we do have some options out there. I think, well, first of all, I'm obviously going to approve this project, but I think that in discussing this, it's also important to note some of the concerns with the slurry seals, and, you know, I had been talking to you about it, and coincidentally, the city had actually gotten a complaint about the slurry seal on their street, and I was talking about someone completely different. And again, this is a resident who I met through canvassing, it's not like a close friend of mine or, you know, a family member, but let me just read, you know, what this text message says. "Congrats on the election, Joel. Hey, brother, there's a handful of us on North Meyer who are really upset..." Not my little version of North Meyer, it's further down. "But hey, brother, there's a handful of us on North Meyer who are really upset with the decision from your Public Works Department to slurry seal our street, instead of doing a full grind of the asphalt and repaving the street to the correct way. Meyer Street on the west side of Fifth Street just recently got repaved and looks very nice. Lazard Street, as recently as last year, had their driveways and sidewalks removed and replaced, as well as having the street completely repaved. However, we got a Mickey Mouse job done with a slurry seal coat, and our sidewalks and driveways are in really bad condition, and the city has done nothing to address these issues. What do we need to do to get some attention here? I have experience in public works, and I can tell you that the conditions of this driveway, curves and gutters and sidewalks are in really bad condition, and also non-ADA compliant." And again, this is not a personal friend by any means, like literally just a new person who I met with door knocking. And so, you know, one of the concerns that I had, and maybe you could address this, and given the fact that Mr. Kimball also got a complaint, was it just one, Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, we just received one.
Yeah, and given that he also got a complaint, what type of actual outreach... what type of actual outreach have you done or researched to make sure that the streets are getting the quality of repair that they need to get?
And if I may, and then, you know, turn it over to Matt. I mean, so we talked about this, the council talked pretty, in a, over the last two budget cycles, I would say, we had some pretty robust discussions through the budget study sessions, because the cost to grind and overlay is basically about $1 million a mile.
It's more than that now, but yeah.
So let's use for ease of calculations, $1 million a mile. So we have $2 million a year, basically, that we get in from, you know, from these special funds. So, in 50 miles of streets. So at 2 miles a street a year to do grind and overlay, which, again, is that ideal? Certainly, grind and overlay is the ideal thing to do. However, it would take us 25 years to get to every street, right? Which is, which is obviously not a, we can't do that. We can't not touch all the streets for 25 years. And then, and then at that 25th year, we'd have to start over again, and those streets would already be in, you know, C and D-level condition. So the slurry seal is really meant to preserve and give a better driving surface than what we would normally have. I would say that the decision point was not between grind and overlay and slurry seal. The decision point was between, between nothing and slurry seal. Grind and overlay wouldn't even be an option because it's not something that we could, that the city could financially do. We don't have $50 million to spend in grind and overlay. I mean, even the projects today, the 18 miles that we're being able to address of slurry seal would cost us $18 to $20 million if we were going to do grind and overlay for all of that, which, that's our entire general fund, right? So I think, I think from a cost spending, you know, from that, those discussions we've been having with council over the last few years, you know, I certainly understand that, you know, there are certain people that would like a better treatment. They would like the, you know, the gold standard, I guess, which would be grind and overlay. However, it wasn't an option between, oh, should we do slurry seal or grind and overlay? It was, should we do nothing or slurry seal? And I think that's where council, you know, it's one of those, you have a dollar, how do you spend it as wisely as possible? So, and I don't know, maybe Matt can go a little bit into the expectation of slurry seal versus, you know, a grind and overlay.
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer your questions, Councilman Farado. I also just wanted to mention, I usually bring up this point when I talk about our approach and doing the slurry seal right now. We have a number of outdated and substandard water mains and sewer mains that we need to address. And so the idea of coming along and spending a lot of money on a full grind or rehab on a street when we haven't even touched the pipe that's underneath there that might need to be replaced, because the last thing you want to do is spend that half million dollars to do a block, and then three to seven years later, you have to come and trench right down the middle and put in a new pipe. You've basically just kind of destroyed your new road surface. So that was part of it, too. So at the same time, we are looking at how do we secure funds to address more of our water mains in town and sewer mains. And so that's something that we're looking at, some of the available funding that might be coming down from the federal government. But that's part of the reason, too, is like, we want to, we want to address all these streets and many of these streets as possible, but we also don't want to fully expend for the optimal treatment and then have to come back five years later and cut right down the middle and replace those pipes. As far as our, how we go about assessing, we do use what's called the Pavement Condition Index. This is something that we do every three years, and we go out and we analyze every square inch of road surface in town and come up with an assessment. And that was kind of the foundation of how we made decisions about which streets we're going to go after, which ones qualify as ones that can get a preservation Phase 1 treatment, and which ones are ones that would be better candidates for Step 2 and Step 3 process and Phase 2. So we did kind of follow that, and also with the understanding is we can't, I couldn't do all 50 miles this year. So we, there are still streets that need attention that will be addressed in the next couple of years. So our goal was to get, can we get 60% of our streets done this year? Can we keep them from deteriorating further? Can we get them up to the condition where they are drivable and give us something that will buy us time for five to 10 years while we look for more funding for water and sewer mains? That was kind of the whole approach and why we wanted to go about doing this. So that's kind of, that's kind of how we went about it.
People always compare their streets with other streets, and I know it's not exactly apples to apples, but I was just surprised to see the list because when I met with you previously at the orientation, you know, I noted that, you know, Shadow Lane, it's such a sad little street, like, it's in such horrible condition. I can't believe that it would actually fall on the step, you know, two- to three-step list versus actually being grinded completely. So again, my concern is that, again, I'm going to support this, but my concern is that we are actually slurring seals, slurry sealing streets that really need to be grinded in its totality. I would just say that if any new information comes as you start this process where, you know, the contractor says, look, this street should really be redone completely as opposed to slurry sealing, that you don't shy from coming to the council and say, you know, we might have mischaracterized or, you know, mislabeled this street. It really needs a more intensive process. I also think that it's helpful in general when we're discussing an item, if staff can forward us any concerns from the community. And again, I know that you don't want to send us negative comments all day, but I think that, you know, the, that one email that I just happened to find out about because I was mentioning someone else, you know, it's good because it helps build perspective amongst the city council. Another thing that you stated is that these slurry seals will last seven to 15 years? That's like a pretty big range, like, the difference between seven and 15. What determines if it's seven or if it's 15? Or is it that the two steps are seven, the three steps are 15?
I think it's just, you know, it's being conservative, right? I mean, it's probably most of them are more in the 12, somewhere in the middle. But I think, you know, the ones that last seven years are probably the ones that are in the absolute worst condition. So it's just depending on what are the actual conditions that contributed to their condition prior to being slurry sealed.
Got it. And then lastly, or not lastly, but have we worked with this contractor before? The one who it's been awarded to?
The American Asphalt. I don't believe they've done work in the city before, but they have done this particular type of process in other areas. And the sub, they have a sub that's working for them that is very instrumental in doing this kind of process across the state. So the team that's working on this project has done this type of work across California.
Right, and I guess my, the reason I ask that is just, it's just that I want to assure that there's some type of quality control. On one of the streets that the city entirely redid, I think it was Seventh Street, I have it in my notes somewhere from the campaign, but the gentleman at his house said that, you know, the street hadn't been done in like 25 or 30 years, and water would puddle in front of his house. And then, once they redid it, the place where water would puddle was actually, you know, was fixed, but now water puddles somewhere else. So the slope is not correct. And when he notified the city about it, he was basically told that they couldn't do anything about it because the work had already been done and the contractor was done with the job. So for me, it's kind of hard to swallow that we have contractors who can do a substandard job. I mean, and he goes, he goes, by the way, the city didn't believe me. Coincidentally, his neighbor's sprinklers were broken, so they started to go off. So we just waited for a few minutes as they come down the street, and there you just have water puddling in front of his house on a supposedly completely redone street. So what assurances do we even have that they have to perform at a certain level?
Our, we do, I would say that the consultant that, our pavement engineering consultant that we brought on board, we're actually using, we're putting a lot more field time with their inspectors observing the work that's being done by the contractor. Not only that, one of the things that we have implemented is actually doing testing of the material that's being used so that we have a comfort that there's not substandard material that's being produced at the plant before it shows up on site. So we are putting in a lot of steps that we didn't do in the past, which is field inspection as well as lab testing.
And in our contract with them, is there any written assurance that they have to do, you know, that they have to abide by certain standards? And if it's not done correctly, they have to come back and redo it?
If they are using, if the materials that they have received from the plant are substandard, then they would have to redo that work.
But it's not just materials, like the way that they lay it? Because I think that the complaint with, that you received was about how they laid it on the street, and I could be wrong. I just saw it in passing.
Yeah, that was, that was the complaint. I will say that, you know, the way that slurry seal works, that, you know, that is unavoidable. You know, it's like, you know, when you're painting over something, if there's a few brush strokes that are outside the line, it's basically an unavoidable consequence of the application that we're putting on there. So while it was a complaint, it's not something that we could necessarily remedy. It's not a quality control thing. I did some investigation after. Quality control is really about sort of having it be evenly laid and having the nice, you know, having the right consistency. And I know Matt won't say this, but I'll say it on his behalf. He did go above and beyond, you know, through the RFP and through the contract, understanding that this is the first time we've done this in a long time. You know, he put out, it was worth it for, from a management standpoint, to spend a little bit more money on having that oversight. We didn't have to put into the contract for our engineering consultant to do project management, field inspections, testing. And it would have been a little bit cheaper, but, you know, I think Matt very wisely, you know, said that we need to put in some quality control.
Right. So with the products, I understand, but in terms of final product, is that part of the contract?
That, we have the field inspection, yeah. So that's why we have the persons there, all, I saw them when we was laying, they have a third-party person watching them the entire time apply the material.
And so one thing I wanted to mention, too, about the, sort of the, what a slurry seal product looks like, especially when it first goes down. It's very dark, you know, when it's dark, it shows all of the workmanship, all of the brush patterns, all of the wheel patterns of the vehicles that are laying it. As they pass by, as the vehicle that's laying it passes by, you see all of those markings. Over time, that starts to dissipate. And especially, we'll hit a kind of sweet spot this summer when it gets really hot. Well, that actually starts, that surface starts to warm up. And the more the street sweepers pass over it, the more vehicles pass over it, that starts to smooth out more and more. So slurry seal is not something that's going to look like Glen Oaks Boulevard after it's been completely repaved. But it does look better as the darkness goes away and as it heats up more over time. It usually takes three to six months, but it starts to look like a good surface, more so after a while.
I guess in closing, I would say that, you know, one of the, I guess one of the downsides, that there's still a number of streets that are left out. One of the streets that I'm very surprised that it's not on this list, unless I missed it. Actually, let me make sure I didn't miss it. On Orange Grove between First and Second, there's always like a dozen potholes in that one little tenth of a mile. And so I didn't see that when I initially looked, but maybe it's on there. And then, whatever the second entrance is to the Viatr supermarket, it's not on South Workman, but on the side, on like Woodworth.
That's actually, that's in there.
Oh, that is in there? Okay, good, okay. So that is my comments. I know this seems like an easy agenda item, so sorry for all those comments, but I feel like there's, you know, still a lot to do. And I guess actually, one last thing, which is, even if we get all these done, we're going to have this conversation in two years that there's this street and that street that needs to be repaved, and we don't have the money. So it's another reason to consider taking out, you know, $2.5 million at 4.69%, so we can do more of these streets.
I would also mention that, you know, we do get $2 million of, this is money that we just have, we already have appropriated. We'll get another $2 million starting in July. So we'll have another phase of additional streets beyond the 30 miles that we're talking about now. Matt will have a plan that we'll be talking about during the budget study session coming up for next year's, meaning the fiscal year '23, '24 is $2 million. That, you know, we'll have a new set of streets in addition to the 30 miles that we're talking about in these two phases. And that's in the next couple of months, we'll be talking about that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montanes?
Okay, thank you, Matt, for going back and coming back with a plan on how we could actually do the streets that we said we wanted to improve. So I very, very much appreciate the work that you did these last couple of months to come back with this plan. This is, this is it. This is our bread and butter. This is what the city is supposed to do, is take care of our streets and sidewalks and public safety. And it's important for us to make these investments that we haven't done in decades. I do agree strongly with the quality control, that that is, that there is very strong quality control every day, looking at what they're doing, and that there's repercussions when things are not done properly. So I just want to make sure that that's in, if you could read it in the contract to us, where the contractor will be held responsible for not doing their work properly.
We can send that, we'll send that out. I don't think Matt has the actual contract in front of him, or do you have that in front?
I might not have the full, I don't have the full contract in front of me now.
We can certainly.
The specs and everything. I don't have all the specs and everything.
Yeah, because a lot of the quality control is related to the specs that are attachments. So we can, we can certainly circulate that, what that, those repercussions are, like, this week after council.
It has to be accountability, strong accountability measures, strong, you know, oversight, you know, strong, like, you know, follow-through and like, you know, making sure that we're doing it on a timely basis. And then make sure that is written into the contract because we have to hold them accountable when they do not do their job properly. And then the other thing I would say is that because it's going to be new for many people in our community, and as you were explaining the process, people may get frustrated because they don't know the process. So whatever we can do with a video, I think is probably the best way, or pictures, to explain what's going to happen, that'll, it's going to be very informative because we're going to get, you know, we're going to continue to get reports of like, the city's not doing it right, the city's not doing it right. But it's actually going to be the way the process works. So I would recommend that we find social media videos, put it on the website, and let people know what the process is going to be, is another recommendation. And then I also think that we should have the calendar up, so that people know what, approximately what time, when their streets is going, where their street is going to get the slurry. So if we have that calendar for the year, let's put it out with obviously, you know, a note that things can be adjusted depending on, you know, things that are outside of our control.
And thank you for that. We actually have a calendar with a map that shows the, for Phase 1, this is for Phase 1. Phase 2 schedule has to be worked out and everything. That work would be happening in March, starting in March and April. But for Phase 1, for that work right now, we actually have maps with actual days color-coded. Like, if you see that your street is this color on this map, it's being done on this day. I will say that while rain is great, rain has slowed us down the last two weeks. So we are actually two weeks behind now on our slurry seal. We were, we had a great first week, and then two, basically two days in a week kind of shuts the whole project down. So unfortunately, we're hoping for some better weather next week, even though rain is good for the region as a whole, it's slowing the project down a tiny bit. But we'll make sure to continue to try to update those maps and schedules, as you were saying, with calendars, and we'll certainly make sure we do that as part of Phase 2 as well.
Are those maps on our website?
Yes, they are.
So maybe just highlight, send out social media, letting people know. You know, go to our website, too, here's a link to find out when streets are going to be repaved, resurfaced, slurry. And then, let's see, then, last thing, I strongly, strongly support, you know, as I've said many times before, you know, looking at additional dollars for, as you're saying, water systems, our sewer system, green streets, water capture, so that we are going, so that we have additional resources to be able to actually do those streets properly that get a lot of flooding especially, right? And address those, so those are, go beyond just basic transportation dollars. But, you know, putting together a big, like, a plan of what it is that we need, how much money we need, and prioritizing that, and then being very aggressive this year to go after, you know, work with our congress member, you know, work with our, primarily Congress, right, federal dollars, to try to get resources to go into, you know, a different approach where it's not just about surfacing, but it's really about doing more complete streets.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll continue to look for those. Yeah, absolutely. We'll continue to look for those funding sources, similar to uh what um our assistant city manager took the lead on for the um uh, the funding, the grant that we're waiting on for for Carlisle, because that was a good example of a street that's in really, or street slash alley that's in really rough shape, that has a lot of drainage issues, flooding issues, but we're looking at the multi benefit uh ability of of getting funding to to do alternative types of paving and and drainage, uh water capture, things like that. So we can look, look at other dollars outside of these um state and county uh allocations that we get every year uh for our uh for our streets. So yeah, we will continue uh, and we appreciate that comment, because we 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 also look at working with our our partners that can help us on these, on these grant opportunities and these designs.
Exactly. Okay, well, thank you again. Really appreciate it. Like I said, I mean, this is a, this is what we do as a city. We we make sure we we provide the basic city services. And San Fernando, I mean, historically, you knew when you came into town, this, uh, our streets were like, were very well taken care of. And I look forward to getting back to that, to that period of where we know we're in San Fernando, even if your eyes are closed, because our streets are smooth, beautiful, they're well maintained. So I really appreciate your hard work on this.
Councilmember Solorio?
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm also gonna piggyback a little bit on councilmember Farhado's comment and councilmember Montañez's in regards to community concern. I think it's very important to like disseminate the information regarding the expectation of what Slurry Seal is gonna look like moving forward. Um, and I'll just give you a personal example, like, um, oh, personal that a neighbor actually told me, where in, they were so excited that the street was getting fixed. I mean, they were outside, my neighbors, just in front. Um, they're like, oh, man, this hasn't happened in many, many years. We're so excited. And then um, once they were done, they were like, that's it. Like, that's what they did. So I think a lot of it is like maybe managing expectations and making sure that the information is definitely disseminated. Um, so people understand what that's gonna look like. And I think for us as council members, making sure that we have consistent updates on um and further clarification, I think, on what quality control is gonna look like in regards to that third party observation. Um, but those are all my comments right now. Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Thank you. Um, I do appreciate the the comments from my colleagues and um, you know, their points well made. And Matt, thank you for the work you've done on this project. You're just, you know, you're amazing. And I trust your judgment in terms of the streets and how they need, and the process that needs to take place. And, you know, I understand the cost in completely redoing a street and that we also need to uh take care of the infrastructure underneath the streets, right, our pipes and our water pipes and all that. Um, you know, I do want to ask, or just, you know, I kind of know the answer, but maybe uh, Mr. Kimball, you can clarify uh, the funds that will be used, that we have measure, let's see, measure R, measure M, uh SB one and state gas tax as well. They're all, and allocated. Just um, you know, we spoke earlier and just so the residents and those listening will will understand that how those funds would have normally been used, because we're gonna use them for this project and what what that, those funds are normally used for.
Sure. So um, all of those that you just mentioned, measure R, measure M, SB one, and state gas tax are all um state taxes, special taxes that were voter approved, you know, over, you know, a period of a number of years, specifically. Um, and and there's a local, a local return portion where, you know, each city, based on how mu, what their population is, gets, you know, a certain amount. Um, at the beginning of the year, so when I say the beginning of the year, I talk, I'm talking fiscal year. You know, so usually in May, we'll get a a projection from the state on how much we're gonna get in the upcoming fiscal year. That's what you use toward the the budget allocations. Um, sometimes they under, you know, they'll underestimate that and maybe more tax revenue will actually come in, so we'll get a little bit more. Um, so over the years, that amount, that's a little bit more that we get, will kind of build up. Um, so that becomes sort of the fund balance. So in all of those funds, those weren't allocated, you know, we can only use them for streets and we didn't have them allocated toward any other project. It's not like by using these toward this project, we were gonna use it toward, you know, something different. I mean, it was really gonna be used toward streets um in the, it can only be used toward streets. So these are sort of just fun, smaller, small-ish fund balances in each one of those areas that there are um over time, some, you know, additional revenues have accumulated. So now we're just recommending, let's sweep all of those additional revenues and put them, you know, put them toward this project as a part of the financing puzzle to to bridge that one point eight million dollar gap.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, like, uh, this is one of my favorite topics is fixing our streets. Everything okay, I'll say. Um, and so I'm really glad that we're we're addressing it and, you know, I I support the prod, approval of this, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I've said it before, I'll say it again. Our community deserves everything that every other community has and more, and that includes incredible streets. Um, I want to acknowledge staff for being really thoughtful about the approach over these last couple of years. Um, Matt, specifically you, for putting forth this plan so we could stretch the dollars we had. And Erica for helping us find more dollars to go even further. We're really grateful for all the work you put into it. I do want to reemphasize um the idea about accountability and quality control, just recognizing that these funds are not ours, they are our community's, our residents' funds. And so they deserve what they're paying for. And so uh as that follow up, it will be great to see the assurance in the contract that our contractors will be held accountable, so we can ensure um there's quality in the roads they're building. Um, I want to recognize too, as thoughtful as we've been, there's always areas of improvement and clearly outreach has been one of those areas. I know when Meyer Street residents came out multiple times, we were able to respond to their needs and show them that they were in the plan and move forward on covering that. Um, I know, Matt, you went out yourself, but I'd like to know if in um the funding plan now, or if we need to add it uh to this budget session or even sooner, to ensure that we can have materials. I know that obviously we have incredible staff who puts together social media um that we could be posting, but I really think it's important we meet people where they are. Not everyone sees our social media and uh door knockers actually go a a long way when you're on someone's street and you let them know that something's happening on their road and why, what is Slurry Seal? Why are we doing it? When is it happening? Um, but I recognize there are printing costs associated, so I wanted to ask both of you if those are something that can be absorbed in current allocations, or if it's something you'd like to bring back, or if we could do that now.
So um, the two things for this particular project, actually, um, we, you, you might have seen we rounded up a little bit, uh, and that's why we we added basically, there's about a hundred thousand dollars more that we were recommending. And that's, that's mostly coming from general fund, fund balance than what is the cost of the contract. So um, we can probably absorb that additional outreach in in uh in this project, using that that delta. Uh, I would say, um, and and I think we've talked about it in the past and we've continued to increase our our outreach efforts. Uh, you know, like, becoming beautiful from earlier is is a perfect example. Um, you know, I I would say, in in this, Carlos is really working on uh on a centralizing this pro, process for us, because I think we need to develop a bench of two or three sort of outreach firms that we can just use, as opposed to having to do an RFP every time, because that slows down the process. Um, so we're working through how we kind of get the that that bench of outreach partners, um, because it just a doorknob, we did, we did put a doorknocker out in all of the affected areas, um, that said, you know, pardon our dust and, you know, scan this QR code, go to our website. But that, that also, a lot of folks don't, just don't pay attention to that. So you almost need someone to actually knock on the door, give that to them and ask, answer questions, which requires a different level, you know, then you need someone that actually knows what the project is, so they can respond to questions, not just a delivery service that goes and delivers them. So um, we are going to be looking at, through the budget, we're going to be proposing some different levels of outreach, um, so that we can have some, we can assign some costs to those. We already started those discussions at a staff level of what that looks like, so we can present different levels to council for for next year's budget, the pace, depending on the level of outreach, right? Again, um, it's, the 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 cost to do just social media is is much different than door knockers and having someone actually answer questions, you know, door to door, answering questions. Um, and and so we'll just kind of compare and contrast those, you know, as we go into the the budget sessions.
Thank you for that, because I know um we consistently raise how we can be better at public outreach, so I'm excited that we'll have some options in the budget sessions. But I also know that Councilmember Montañez mentioned producing videos. Um, and so for that, in the more immediate future, do you have the ability to absorb that in current allocations, or do we need?
So Matt has a pretty, he showed us a tool that he had, uh, one of the vendors that does Slurry Seal, where you can slide and see, um, this is what it looks like now, and you slide to the left. So there are some tools that we can put on the website that are more visual. Um, and I think we can, we can show, we did put up, so in response, I just want to, you know, in response to some of the the feedback that we got, would, again, very, very minor, compared to the number of of households that were affected, you know, getting one or two complaints is is not not a very high percentage, but but we don't, we understand we wanted to have out there the expectation setting. So the first thing that we put on our website, and I don't know, um, uh, Crystal, if you can pull up www.sfcity.org/street-repair. Um, but the, but we added last week an FAQ system, what, or FAQ right at the top of the page. So what is Slurry Seal? What can I expect? If I, you know, so we we put that in response to that, just to kind of start that. Um, and that's the QR code, that if you got a door hanger, you scan the QR code, it takes you um right to that website. So that's, and that's what has the the dates that your, you know, your application is going to be, or your Slurry Seal is going to be applied. We have to update that now because of the rain. So it's outdated, but we don't have a new schedule to update it with. Um, so we are actually updating that in real time, that website. Um, and and anytime someone calls in or 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 contacts us, we're, we're giving them that um that website, so that they at least have something to kind of stay up to date with. I'm stalling until Crystal, I don't know if it, yeah, it's just sfcity.org/street dash repair, or hyphen, hyphen repairs, repairs.
And while you bring it up, um, I'm gonna make a quick plug for our city app that we've been discussing um as a mechanism for collecting immediate feedback from the community and being able to flag any streets that have repeated issues or potholes or community concerns.
And um, that segues, I, today I I gave out the the Corey Look Ahead Report, and you'll see that discussion of that um and potential award of a contract, that website redesign and city app will be coming back in February. Okay, so I, so this is um our, if you go to the top of this page, um, so we have, you can see we have a frequently asked questions, a schedule and a contact us, and it just has um some general information. The annual street resurface project, you can just, we won't go through the whole thing, you know, anyone can go through this, but you, we have the map. Can you scroll down a little bit more? So this has the map and then keep scrolling down. Um, frequently asked questions, how is Slurry Seal different? When is it safe to drive? Um, and you just a couple of questions and go down the schedule. And so you can see, these are the different schedules. So I didn't click on any of those, Crystal, just to so you can see, uh, again, this one's probably outdated now, because I think it rained during this week. But you can see if you're red, it just goes to the top, it says December twenty-seventh, and that was the red area. So um, we're updating this. This is gonna be up to date over the next couple um weeks as we finish uh the phase one, and will be uh made even more robust in phase two. This is where we would put um some of those, some of those tools that might help explain a little bit more, so we'll continue to explore how we can make the information on this uh even more useful. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, do we have a motion in a second?
We comment that, you're right, that that little Viatrata, I was looking at the wrong map. The Viatrata Street is on there and that little strip of Orange Grove, so clearly I was not looking at the right one. I I'll move the item.
Second.
Roca? Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez?
Yes, and thank you.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. The motion passes. Up next, we have item number eight, consideration to adopt city council liaison and ad hoc assignments. Do you want to start us off, Mr. City Manager?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, so real quick, uh, usually the first meeting after the council reorg each year, um, staff works with the uh the new mayor to um look at all of the liaison assignments um in ad hoc committees and uh in in make recommendations for appointments to um many of those, especially since this year, we had two council members um that uh that are no longer um on the council, so we have, we have a number of positions to fill. And also, uh, I think the mayor wanted to reallocate to make sure everyone sort of had a an equal, equal representation on some of the liaison assignments. So those are um, the 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 recommended appointments for all the liaisons uh assignments are uh are included as attachment A um on page two oh five. Uh, and then um, and then I wanted to turn it over to the, to the mayor on she, on on some of the ad hocks and 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 what her, um, what she would like to uh put forward as as ad hoc committees for the coming year.
Thank you for that quick summary. Um, as the mayor, I wanted to be as thoughtful and intentional as possible regarding our liaison and ad hoc assignments. Um, out of our next following meeting, I'll be bringing forward the ad hoc assignments with our strategic goal, so that we can align those more effectively. For tonight, for consideration, our liaison assignments. Um, and as Nick was mentioning, um, I wanted to ensure equal opportunity and responsibility among the council. And so I want to turn it over for comments. If anyone is interested in adding their name for consideration to one of these assignments, then staff will walk us through how that vote will happen. Uh, but with that, Councilman Farhado?
Great. Um, I think that when it comes, I know that the ad hocks are mentioned on here too, even though that's not uh what the chart shows, but I think that for the ad hocks, it might be helpful instead of pre assigning people to those committees, or at least just to have an open discussion and to show which ones are vacant. We might want to combine some, we might want, we might want to delete some. Um, as far as this list goes, the um, you know, it's very challenging for me to to do stuff in the evenings. And obviously I have to do that for city council, but especially with having kids now, um, it really just changes the scope of what I'm able to do. So the item number twelve, which is the uh Metropolitan, you know, MTA, uh, would be most likely uh un, un, infeasible or unfeasible, one of the two. Um, and the Independent Cities Association as the alternate, I I just don't see many circumstances where I would be able to do that. Now, uh, given the fact that Mary Solorio is, or Councilmember Solorio is the primary person, if there just happens to be a meeting that she really can't make, but she feels that it's super important for us to be there because we're voting on something, you know, I can try and rearrange things, but I wouldn't want to mislead anyone that I'm going to, you know, definitively be able to step in. The one that I would more likely be able to step in on um as an alternative is uh SCAG, only because it's in the mornings, which gives me a little more flexibility, since the girls are uh at daycare, and I can even, you know, potentially drop them off earlier if I happen to have them that day. Um, as far as the uh MTA goes, I I think that it would be helpful to open it up to someone new. I understand that uh, you know, Mr. Gonzalez currently serves there. Uh, the feedback that I have gotten from the community, and it's been from, you know, a decent number of people, that while he is uh, you know, a a past, you know, well-regarded council member, they would like to see opportunities for new people, but in addition, in addition to that, there is a lot of concern that a a spouse would be, you know, renominating him and and voting on him. Now, I I want to make sure that you understand that this is not me trying to attack you. I actually have a lot of nostalgia for uh Councilmember Gonzalez. I know that he and I, uh, maybe it seems like we didn't end up on good terms, but he's someone who I hold, you know, very dearly in my heart for the passion that he had as a young man to try and really save this city. And so this is not meant in any way to to belittle him. There's many great things I could say about him and many things that I wish I had done differently, you know, to have a a better relationship today. Uh, but that's simply my feedback. Um, if I were, if you found me ten years ago and I were younger, I'd love to do MTA. You know, I'm not there at my life right now. So, yeah, I would like to be the, if you, if you need me as an alternate for something, the only one that could work out is SCAG. And as far as the MTA, I think it'd be nice to open it up to someone new. Uh, no one has lobbied me for it, but the only person who I could think of off the top of my head is Victoria Garcia, who also ran. She did not ask me for this. We haven't had any communication. She did not ask me for this, we haven't had any communication on this. But, you know, she's someone who loves government. She went to Harvard and Stanford, which is probably, you know, which I think is, you know, a huge accomplishment. And so those are just my thoughts on, on this list.
To clarify, you would ask, you're asking to be removed as the alternate for ICA and MTA.
And if the council wants me to stay on, and again, if there's something important that comes up and Councilmember Solorio really needs to be there, I can try and make you work, but I don't want to mislead the council that I'm going to be a reliable source to be able to make it. So it's up to the council, like I'm totally fine being on there if you want me to wing it and see how things go.
We can definitely, if, when we go around, if there are any volunteers to take that alternate spot, please volunteer. I'd also like to clarify that the MTA is actually not up yet. It was an elected position that we don't have the ability to change right now. It's between different cities and so that's not something we're considering to approve. Or it's there as a note that in July, we do need to reassign that. And that was just an option if you were interested, which I understand now you are not. So we can definitely open it up to the public and I'd love if we could actually do like a public outreach opportunity for that. Councilmember Montañez?
I am comfortable with, you know, taking the mall association and the FICA, the economic, I'm sorry, economic alliance. And, you know, with, with these selections, so I'm good. You know, being the alternate to SCAG, you know, if somebody wants to do that, somebody can do it, but happy to take it on.
Councilmember Solorio?
I am very happy to serve in any way that I can. I'm very excited to serve as, for independent cities, actually. So thank you for assigning me and also very happily to serve an alternative as wherever I can. And thank you, Joel, for your, Councilmember Farhado, for your forwardness in letting us know, right, that you might not be available for these things, and so I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
I'm fine with what you've assigned me with.
And with that, would you be open to serving as the alternate for ICA, Councilmember Mendoza? Vice Mayor Mendoza? I'm gonna get used to this.
I have a recommendation, when's my time?
Where are those meetings at?
They're Thursday evenings, I believe, unless you want to correct me, Nick.
Where at?
Virtual.
Oh, virtual?
And feel free, if you're not interested, I can step in as an alternate. Or I think we have a recommendation coming.
I'll hold on for a moment.
Okay, go ahead.
My recommendation, I don't have to source it to Councilmember Montañez, but Councilmember Montañez, just so that we can kind of all have an equal stake in making sure that we're alternates and primaries, would you be open to being the alternate, sorry, the alternate rather for, for independent cities? And I would be the alternate for SCAG? If that doesn't work out for you, that's totally fine. I just want to make sure that other people aren't carrying my weight, so, and that I'm, you know, participating.
What does the Independent Cities Association actually do?
It's kind of like a legal cities group almost, but, you know, if Mr. Kimball or staff or the mayor has more information, then they can provide you with that.
Yeah, they're, they're basically a, a, a policy advocacy organization that, you know, develops. They'll, they don't, they, they have like annual conferences that discuss, you know, certain issues that are facing, you know, cities, a lot of housing policies. So they come up, they, they are very similar to League of California Cities. They're just very focused on, you know, Southern California, or not Southern California, but smaller independent cities. I know Mayor Rodriguez has served on, served on that as our liaison. I don't know if you had anything to add?
Yeah, nonprofit cities that primarily have their own independent public, I'm sorry, police departments. And so there's different things that come up, obviously, for cities like ours that are, they share educational opportunities, the conferences that Nick mentioned. As, I believe they're 501(c)(3), so they don't actually have the ability to lobby on any sort of legislation, but they do provide an opportunity for different cities to collaborate and learn and work together. But it's still on the table, Councilmember Montañez, if, if you're interested in swapping those alternate positions or not.
I'm, if you're not, that's fine.
And I would say that the alternates rarely attend. And it, it's typically, unless Councilmember Solorio thinks that she might have a conflict, which I'm assuming she didn't, you know, very rarely do alternates need to attend.
Yeah, I can offer myself as the alternate for ICA.
Okay, and if you want me to serve as an alternate for something, I don't want you to have to, you know, do it for me. So I'm more than happy to do another alternate position if need be.
I think we're, we're set for now. Go ahead, Councilmember Montañez.
If Councilmember Farhado wants to do SCAG, I don't have to be the alternate for SCAG. And that's, that's a Thursday morning, so that should work for you, right?
She's asking me? Yeah, in theory, I should be able, if I'm needed as an alternate, that would work, that'd be more likely to work for me on short notice than independent cities. And my goal is not that I want to be on it, it's just that I want to carry my weight. So, but if you're all fine with the way that things are and the caveat that I might not be able to be an alternate on a certain day for independent cities, I'm fine staying with the recommendation.
So Councilmember Montañez, are you swapping those?
No, I definitely don't find the, I, the independent cities, I don't know if that's going to be useful.
I'll stick with it.
Okay, so let's, if I can, I can become the alternate for ICA?
If you'd like to, yeah.
And then I think that would be the only adjustment if someone, if anyone has any more questions or comments, please let me know, otherwise we could take a motion in a second.
I just have a question, so Mr. Kimball, just to give the public a fair opportunity to, you know, apply for MTA and again, Ms. Garcia might even say, why are you mentioning my name? Don't talk about me. But, you know, I'd obviously let her know, but are we, should we just put out an application on the city website?
Yeah, so, and, and, you know, I'd love to work with the mayor on, on the process. We've talked about even some with various council members that in the past went commissioners that maybe they didn't know anyone, so we talked about an application process. I'd love, I, I think that's a great idea to just put out a, we can put an ad in the paper, we can put it on our website, have a general application. And then, and then we can have a night when we have, you know, applicants come in and anyone that wanted to apply, just give a quick, you know, three minute.
Yeah, and it could even be an amalgamation of the, you know, the, the application to be a commissioner.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
We can certainly do that and we have some time, we, we have, we won't wait till the last minute, but, you know, we can, we can help that over the next few months.
Oh, I was gonna make a motion, but go ahead.
All right, we have another comment.
The attorney wants to.
Oh, thank you.
Only to piggyback that there are actually state law requirements that you have to do some minimal level of advertising for committees like this where residents are.
We haven't done them in the past, so I guess we'll start now.
And can I clarify then, for example, for vector control? I've put forward former councilmember Ballin, out of respect for my, for the vice mayor who mentioned that she was interested, but we didn't do any sort of public process for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, at this point, I don't know that there's much to worry about in terms of past decisions, but I think going forward, I mean, it certainly would get us in line with what state law requires anyway, which is to have some minimal level of outreach for.
Okay, so we can move forward this evening with the recommendations, but after we make this new arrangement, then we'll be consistent.
Nice to know after 10 years that we've been doing it wrong, so, oh, yeah. Okay, well, good to know. Mr. Pede, does that apply to commissioner positions as well, or does it mean some of these specialty, you know?
I mean, it doesn't apply to commissions that you serve on in representative capacity for the city, but I do believe it applies to a broad number.
Like external to the city council.
Okay, so in that case, then I will move to approve agenda item number eight with the modification that Celeste Rodriguez shall serve as the alternate for independent cities in lieu of me and that I will be removed from item number 12 and that there will be an application process for the public for that matter.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Councilman.
Just a clarifying question, like, we're gonna do council ad hocks at a different meeting, right?
Correct, we'll do that at our next council meeting with the strategic goals conversation.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Could you roll call, please? I have the second.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez? Councilmember Montañez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. The motion passes. Up next, we have item number 11, consideration to appoint representatives to serve as commissioners to the education, parks, wellness and recreation, transportation and public safety and planning and preservation commissions.
That'd be the longest title we've had for our appointment of commissions. All of these individuals have previously served in some capacity. I did state, you know, when I was running that I would reappoint Councilmember Pacheco's commissioners and, you know, I know them fairly well. Nicole Moore is a friend of mine, I was introduced to her by one of her students in 2015, which is how she got involved in city issues. Ms. Obo Rodriguez has been a staple on the education committee for some time. Vice Mayor Pacheco is obviously a former vice mayor and council member and will serve in his planning. And Ms. Brooks, I actually introduced to Mr. Pacheco from my door knocking in the campaign. She was so animated when it came to great things that we could do with the parks, how to try to find a way to escape from her front park. So she really has her, her heart vested, you know, in the beautification of our parks. And that is why I renominated these phenomenal individuals for their immense qualifications and their passion. And so if there's no questions or objections, I will move to approve this item.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Farhado?
Yes.
Councilmember Montañez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Up next, we have item number 12, consideration and discussion to provide staff direction for a presentation on the San Fernando Police Department and related issues to be agendized.
Thank you. So in October, I submitted public comments to the city clerk, which were read. I believe that those, that those are the only public comments I've ever had at a city council meeting. And for some time, I have had, you know, very serious concerns with the direction of San Fernando Police Department. And this has nothing to do with the tenure of our chief, this, you know, predated his arrival in the city of San Fernando. I'm someone who has always been in fairly good communication with San Fernando Police Officers Association because I believe that they are one of the backbones of the community. And public safety is, you know, weighs very largely on people's mind, especially nowadays when people, you know, see more crime in the city, they see more homelessness and they want to make sure that we have a, a strong police department. And so I just do want to clarify though, no one from the Police Officers Association asked me to agendize this. No one from the community told me to do this. This is really from, you know, this is done on my own accord based off of concerns that I've heard from rank and file police officers, from people who are on the POA and from community members. And I have probably spent several hours since being re-elected or since being elected, speaking with Mr. Kimball and the chief at various times about these issues. But I feel that many of us get this information piecemeal and I don't think that we need to have a special meeting every month on this. But given the fact that there have been issues and miscommunication brewing for literally years, I think that it's helpful for all of us to be on the same page in terms of what's happening. I think that it would probably end up being a long meeting because of my communications with them on police issues. With, you know, only a fraction of my questions, or, you know, maybe half of my questions answered are three quarters. You know, I've probably spent about four or five hours speaking with them on some of these matters. And I think that it's really hard for us to make policy issues if we don't all have the same facts or if we're hearing things different ways. And so that is why I brought this issue forward. There are two parts, one of them is the Parenting Academy, Parent Academy. The other one is having a special meeting with things that I would like for us to discuss and have a better understanding of. I spoke to Mr. Kimball about this and he had actually told me that they were going to plan to have a presentation. I think that maybe some of the impetus in all of it was the, the public comments that I had, where there are valid concerns, that there are some things that are unknown in the community. But the reason, even though he was already preparing to bring something, the reason that I wanted to agendize this is twofold. One, is to make sure that it's a separate matter so that we're not trying to squeeze it in between ad hocks and parks. And the second reason, to make sure that we understand what we're going to be discussing because Mr. Kimball or the chief might infer something that I'm saying, but, or, or infer a request that I have, but they might not necessarily prepare for another topic that I thought was related or part of that. And so this is the list of what I wanted to discuss if the council is so willing to have this meeting. And when I say special meeting, I'm thinking of it more in terms of a study session, but nonetheless, since it would be on a separate day, it would still constitute a special meeting. Impacts and changes on San Fernando Police Department due to SB 2. Timeline and list of steps that result are for investigations and what triggers an investigation, what the appeals process looks like, how arbitration is started and what the process entails. If the city is liable for lawsuits following arbitration, especially if the arbitrator sides on, on behalf of the defendant, what information can the city council be privy to related to some of these matters? For example, are we notified if someone's fired? I normally find out through other people, some of them aren't even part of the police department. I find out from people like at a restaurant or on the street. Are we allowed to know when someone's rehired? Are we allowed to know the outcomes of, of what the arbitrator says? And if the city can provide us with examples of what, on how other cities, oh, sorry, if the city of San Fernando staff can provide us with examples of how other cities handle these arbitrations and investigations. The reason I bring this up is that I know that we have a policy on the books that was probably instituted in the 1970s, maybe 1980s. But Glendale has actually updated their process whereby they actually have a citizens' commission that has oversight over some of the decisions that are made to make sure that someone is not being targeted. And again, this is all anecdotal, I read a little bit about it, but I'd love to learn more about that process. I'd like to know a summary of the changes that San Fernando PD has undergone since the new chief has arrived. For example, any changes to policies, procedures, including any plans for the school resource officers, precinct captains. I would actually like more information on the city attorney for police issues. I did learn that we finally got rid of what I believe, who I believe to be a disastrous attorney on police matters. I've only met him on a handful of other occasions, but I'm glad that the chief agreed with me and that they have a new attorney. But we really don't know these attorneys. A lot of people think that it's Mr. Padilla who is guiding the city on all these issues, but it's a completely different entity. And then lastly, I'd like for us to talk about the staffing shortages, the impact that this has on patrolling and response times, a hiring plan, including what outreach we do, what the application that they fill out even looks like, and what steps there are in the application process. And one of the things that is always brought to my attention, and I don't know if this is a rumor or true, but apparently there were dozens of people who inter, well-qualified people who interviewed under the previous chief of police who were never hired. And I would just like to know if that's actually true, if there were like 40 something people who applied and not a single one was hired. I mean, I'd love to put some of this mythology to rest and have actual facts. And I know you can't give us people's names, but if you're able to give us some of those statistics so we know what the hiring rate actually is. And lastly, what we can actually discuss in closed session, if, if any of these matters have the ability to be discussed in closed session because they, they cover sensitive topics, or if none of them are able to be discussed in closed session. So this is the gist of what I wanted to discuss. I think that there is a, you know, disconnect between the rank and file officers and management. And it honestly breaks my heart, like, I am not a super sensitive person, but I just can't tell you how much time I put into thinking about this or we can bridge these differences or where there's miscommunication or where, you know, we're inheriting problems from past chiefs that we're trying to iron out. And I think that, given the fact that there is a lot of antipathy right now in the police department, it's really healthy for us to be able to discuss this, not because I distrust the chief, more so because I do trust him as a person of integrity and I want to find out how we can build these bridges, you know, bridge these differences and find out how we can make San Fernando Police
That is correct. The first meeting would be facilitated by myself. I invited city manager Kimball to be there as well, and it would just be an introductory session and briefly talking about the difference between the federal, state, county, and local government. So it's almost like a civics class is what it would be. So that would be the first session.
Okay. And that, that's, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, holding a meeting for the Citizens Academy isn't hindering the ability of the police department in patrolling the community or responding to any concerns in our community, which is, you know, definitely valid. So for now, those are all my comments. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
When was the academy plan due to begin, Chief?
So we were planning initially to start January 10th. Again, if we want to postpone it, I'm open to that as well. The goal here was to meet some of the strategic objectives put out by the council with respect to community outreach. However, whatever the council decides, you know, we, we will, we will implement. But I think ensuring that, you know, we're engaging the community and we're trying to provide that legitimacy and trust that is very important to ensuring that we're effective as a police department is important. Additionally, the Parent Academy, that was something that initially was mentioned when I went to go speak at a community engagement at Santa Rosa Catholic Church. And in that, in that meeting, which Vice Mayor Mendoza was there, I mean, you can attest firsthand as to the need or the needs for parents to, to have that additional support and to have basic questions answered, such as what constitutes child abuse? Is spanking my child considered child abuse? How do we provide a home and a home environment where, where the probability of a child engaging in, in deviant or inappropriate behavior in school can be mitigated? So, you know, it, it's not a police academy or Citizens Academy in that we're looking to create future police officers, but it's almost a holistic approach to supporting the community and ultimately reducing crime through prevention and intervention versus necessarily enforcement, solely enforcement and rehabilitation.
Thank you. Well, you know, I, I was at the, the meeting at Santa Rosa, and with, there were, how many? About 15 parents or so there. And one of the parents was sharing information about her, one of her older sons, and she had younger children. And she literally wrote down crying because she was like, she was concerned about how she brought up her older child, had she had information on, now on how she's dealing with her younger children.
Several things that were of concern that I think we're trying to address. And again, apply best practices and I think conflating and not totally understanding the whole second officer on scene.
Mm-hmm.
For a domestic violence call, that doesn't preclude police officers to use their best judgment. However, there are certain times of calls for service that should not be handled by one police officer.
Uh, there's a lot to clarify. That's just why I'm saying that having a Citizens Academy, if one is to transpire, would just be better to have in February. So that all these rumors, misinformation, uh, you know, misunderstandings, we just are all on the same page. So we know what's happening because even if you say, you know, even if you, you know, remove everything that I've heard from anyone in San Fernando Police Department, the fact that more people have mentioned this as a concern than ever on the door knocking, that in and of itself is evidence to me that we need to have this discussion to find out what's happening in the community. And so, um, that is what I come forward today, um, to ask for a study session, you know, AKA special meeting, to have an open discussion on these items. Um, in addition to any items that any of you would like to discuss, and that we at least ask the, uh, you know, staff to postpone the, uh, Citizens Academy until February, so that we can hopefully have this special meeting in January.
Councilmember Montañez?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I, you know, I strongly believe in support the, uh, you know, our public safety and that's our number one goal is to make sure that we have the top-notch, most organized, well-managed police department that we possibly can have. And that's our, it's on our top priority as a council. So I think a lot of the issues that are being brought up are actually good issues for us to get further information. Um, I support, um, really trying to better understand, you know, the staffing. Because it's not clear to me, um, how many positions are budgeted? How many positions are filled? How many, you know, do we have fully-staffed patrol units with officers, not just sergeants, you know, being brought in with, uh, you know, at a different time, last minute at times? Um, there was the discussion about traffic enforcement units. There was discussion about, you know, the senior lead officer program. Um, I don't know if any of that actually has become reality, if there's a plan for any of that. Uh, I think we need to discuss that. I think that metrics, reporting back on a weekly basis at minimum on arrests and other actions that the city has, that the police officers have done is important. So we should be getting that information back, um, to at least a minimum of the council. But the public should be aware of what's going on. And then I do agree with procedures and policies because, you know, you hear different things about what officers are allowed or not allowed, or encouraged or not encouraged to do when it comes to actual enforcement. And, and I've seen myself where, where officers have shown up and haven't, haven't gone up, out of their car, have just drove by. I'm not sure how that gets reported. If that's, we've got, how, you know, does that get reported as an officer actually attending and addressing the issue? Or just, um, you know, just driving by is enough without actually getting out of their car? Then I also think that training, if we're talking about training, we should talk about what's the training for our internal personnel? What's the type of training that's being done? So that we have, again, a really well-qualified professional, well-trained, um, highly-educated police department that could respect, you know, do, do, do the enforcement in a way that's respectful to community. And it's actually, you know, giving us the results that we need. Um, I have concerns about the graffiti increasing. And there was discussion about, um, gang activities or it, um, none of that. Um, we don't get reports back. So I do think that having a steady session, closed session, some type of public session, I mean, is something that I would support because this is our top priority is making sure that San Fernando is a safe city that we can possibly have.
Thank you, Councilmember Montañez. Councilmember Solario?
Thank you. Um, so in regards to the comments that Councilmember Fajardo and Councilmember Montañez, um, I agree that an open session would be a great form of communication in regards to all the questions. I imagine that there would be a great process in regards to maybe starting with some emails or seeing how we can get these questions beforehand, so it's prepped up. So we don't have maybe somewhat of a dragged-out meeting. Of course, it might be questions beforehand. I mean, in the meeting that will come up, I imagine. But, um, an open session or closed session, whatever that may be, I think the meeting would be a good idea. Um, in regards to the delaying of the Citizens Academy, what it sounded like to me was that there was a concern, um, whether it's community member or council member, um, with whether that's patrolling and/or, um, being at the Citizens Academy. And so at the end, it sounds like that that concern was, um, um, maybe not realistic in a sense because, um, what it sounded like to me from Chief Aldez, correct me if I'm wrong, that there would be no interference in this maybe three-hour session of the Citizens Academy if, um, we did hold one meeting prior to having the open session. Is that right? Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct. The first meeting would be facilitated by myself. I invited, uh, City Manager Kimball to be there as well. And it would just be an introductory session and briefly talking about the difference between the federal, state, county, and local government. So it's almost like a civics class is what it would be. So that would be the first session.
Okay. And that, that's, um, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that, um, you know, holding a meeting for the Citizens Academy isn't hindering the ability of the police department in patrolling the community or responding to, um, any concerns in our community, which is, you know, um, definitely valid. So, um, for now, those are all my comments. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Um, when was the academy, uh, due to begin, Chief?
So we were planning initially to start, uh, January 10th. Again, if we want to postpone it, I'm open to that as well. The goal here was to meet some of the strategic, uh, objectives put out by the council with respect to community outreach. Uh, however, uh, whatever the council decides, you know, we, we will, we will implement. But I think ensuring that, uh, you know, we're engaging the community and, uh, we're trying to provide that legitimacy and trust that is very important to ensuring that, uh, we're effective as a police department is important. Additionally, the parent academy, that was something that, uh, initially was, um, mentioned when I went to go speak at a community engagement at Santa Rosa Catholic Church. And in that, um, in that meeting, which, uh, Vice Mayor Mendoza was there, I mean, you can attest firsthand as to the need or the needs, uh, for parents, uh, to have that additional support and to have basic questions answered, such as, uh, what constitutes child abuse? Is spanking my child considered child abuse? Um, how do we provide a home and a home environment where, where the probability of a child engaging in, in, uh, deviant or inappropriate behavior in school can be mitigated? So, you know, it, it's not a police academy or citizens academy in that we're looking to create future police officers, but it's almost a holistic approach to, uh, supporting the community and ultimately reducing crime through prevention and intervention versus necessarily enforcement, solely enforcement and rehabilitation.
Thank you. Um, well, you know, I, uh, I was at the, the meeting at Santa Rosa and with, there were, how many? About fifteen parents or so there. And one of the, uh, parents was sharing information about her, one of her older sons, and she had younger children. And she literally wrote down crying because she was like, she was concerned about how she brought up her older child. Had she had information on now on how she's dealing with her younger children. And just with that one parent, I mean, that's like evident of, of the needs of our community. Um, this is something that I've always, in, in terms of, uh, uh, parent, uh, classes for, uh, parenting classes, is something that I've always, um, had a great interest in. And I'm glad that I have an opportunity here as a council member to, uh, possibly create something like that or have the council, uh, uh, support that. I think it's, uh, something that's important, that parents need a lot of information. They need guidance. They need to know how to deal with their children. And we are living in very difficult times. So I find this is, uh, this is very close to my heart. Because it's something, like I said, it's something that I've always wanted. I just didn't have the, the avenues to do this. And the community academy, I, I support that as well. You know, as Chief says and, and Mr. Kimball, there won't be staff that will be used other, uh, that will affect patrolling or, uh, the community safety. And I trust in, in what they're, they're telling us. I don't see why they would be saying anything that would conflict with that. And, um, you know, I know you said it's January 10th, but in that you stopped, uh, kind of like signing up people. Do you need just a little more time to sign up more people or? Um, because I, I personally would hate to see it not move forward. But, uh, since you did stop because of this agenda item, I don't know if you need more time?
I, I want it to be, uh, the police department wants it to be a success. And there is a lot to gain from this. I've seen this community academy concept work at the agency where I came from. And it got to the point where many of the people who attended, uh, became volunteers within the police department and, like I said, became ambassadors. So this is a great opportunity for us to capitalize on the fact that San Fernando loves its police department. It does. The community support here is outstanding. And if we can educate and foster an even stronger relationship with our community members, specifically those that want to learn more about their city government and, um, police department, then I think, you know, we should, um, we should facilitate that opportunity. Now, if that means we have to delay it, I have no problem with that. I, one of my faults is I like to move quick, but I also need to learn how to be patient. And so if that means being a little patient so that we get individuals from the community that you recommend, or if the council members themselves, you know, making sure we comply with all laws, want to attend firsthand, so they understand what the community is learning and gauging the types of questions that are being asked. I, I have no problem with that. I will do what the council believes is best. Um, but having said that, there's one other thing I want to add to this. And we talked about, and I think Councilmember Montañez talked about having the most professional police department we possibly can. And I'm looking at this from a thirty-thousand-foot view. How do I develop my police officers? How do I help them grow as individuals, as professionals? And a lot of times that's putting them in front of a, 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 a group of community members to be able to talk about and articulate what it is they do. And many times it's an opportunity for them to develop their facilitation skills. And this is actually one of the, uh, the things that is taught at the police academy. I teach at the police academy as well, LD three or Learning Domain Three, is about community policing and facilitating and engaging the community in positive environments. So this is, this is nothing, um, that we would be doing that is out of the ordinary. Just the reverse. This is a, a best practices type thing. So, um, I, I understand the concerns, be more will, more than willing to answer any questions. But, um, I, I think my recommendation is that we move forward with it, whether it's now or in February or March. But it's something I think as, as a police department, uh, we need to do.
So, you know, I do support the, um, moving forward with the, uh, the community academy. I do wa, I do want to see you with a full class, you know, and I want you to have more time possibly. And maybe, like you said, staff can, uh, participate if they wish. Or, you know, we might have other recommendations. So maybe giving us a little time to send some names to you, that's a possibility. Because I haven't reached out to anyone about it and I would like to have that opportunity. And in terms of the, uh, comments, uh, by Councilmember, uh, Fajardo and Montañez, I think that there, there were so many concerns that you brought up that I think that, uh, Mr. Kimball and, and the chief, Chief Aldez, need time to, to look at the list of items that you've, you've presented and come up with something and let us know how they feel that each item should be addressed. Because I don't want to have any, um, conflict that, uh, you know, we're, we're getting information that might affect staff that we have right now. I mean, I don't know. It's like a very touchy subject. And I don't want to get to the point where maybe I'm getting personnel information that I'm not really supposed to have. So I'm not sure if the format of doing it in public, some things, yes. You know, of course, we all, we, the chief was going to do the presentation on SB two, SB two. And that's been in the talkings for a while. So I'm sure he's been preparing for that. And, you know, what, what items can he bring in and give us a presentation and we discuss them? Uh, whatever format they feel, I would, I would like to leave it to them to, to bring back to us on how they, they feel is the best way to present it to us. Is it closed session? Is it, uh, presentations at meetings? Or is it having, uh, a special meeting to discuss it? I, I'm not sure what is the best route, but I think you need time to, to discuss them among yourselves. That's my opinion.
I would just mention, um, there are very limited reasons to discuss something in closed session. And really, it's labor negotiations, um, potential litigation and, uh, yeah. So there's very few of these, this discussion, whenever we have it, will most likely need to be an open session. I don't, I don't see anything that would be closed session.
I just, I just want to recognize, I think the vice mayor is asking for you to return with what those specific items are and aren't. We don't have to discuss which ones at this time.
I just wanted to mention that because it's, closed session's been mentioned a few times. So just for everyone's edification, it's very limited what you can talk about in closed session.
I appreciate that. And, you know, maybe, you know, a, a special meeting where we, you, you have just the whole thing planned out for us, a whole study session. Maybe that might be a route to go and, I don't know. But I don't know. You are, I'm going to leave it up to you. Thank you.
I'm completely supportive of the community academy moving forward as planned as well. And I want to thank you for taking the initiative to move this concept forward and all of your colleagues for your willingness to take on different presentations. I think it's an incredible opportunity to build more transparency and trust and relationships with our community. So I'm very excited for it to move forward. Um, in regards to the other items, um, I think many of the issues have been addressed already. But I agree that I'd like to defer to staff about breaking apart these issues and deciding the most appropriate way to bring it back to us, whether it is a singular meeting or perhaps there's different topics, um, such as the staffing levels that were mentioned and protocols versus kind of, um, the other issues that have been raised. Um, but I look forward to your recommendations for that in the future. Do you have sufficient direction?
Well, um, so I, I guess I'd want to get, I don't think there was consensus on, I, I wouldn't say that there was consensus on whether or not to have a special meeting. Um, I heard a few different ideas. Uh, let me throw out a possibility, right? The, uh, I think Councilmember Solario had mentioned emailing staff topics that they would like to, the council members would like to be discussed. So, you know, I think one thing that we can do is give a timeline, you know, maybe by next Friday. And, and I'm just saying that we need, you know, we need any councilor that has a count, like, we'd love to get all the topics that, that, I wrote many of them down, but get all those tom, cop, topics. But then Councilwoman Montanez had a number. So email staff the, the topics. Um, and, you know, it seems like there'll be enough discussion that if council is open to a special meeting, um, we could almost do it like a facilitated special meeting where we have, um, a, a number of different topics, uh, that we kind of, we kind of go through. You know, January does have five Mondays. So we could use potentially the fifth Monday. I know scheduling is always, um, you know, we could kind of tentatively look at the fifth Monday to have sort of that special discussion. You know, I, I would say, you know, we, we, we want to keep it at the policy level as opposed to sort of the, the nitty-gritty operations level, right? Our police officers go to a police academy, get trained on how to do special tactics, on how to, you know, do certain things. So, um, you know, there are procedures and, and, and rules that we need to follow, but we certainly want to address as many of those to, to clarify what best practices are in the industry and, and how, you know, some of the changes are. So, um, I mean, staff is certainly open to it being a special meeting. That being said, I, I believe that's, you know, council will need to let us know that, that, you know, all five of you can attend, um, that. So we can, what we can do is, is get your availability, council's availability and your topics. Um, and if you're available on that, that fifth Monday in January, that may be a good opportunity. Um, and, and we can sort of have a, a more, you know, kind of, just a discussion that's a little bit more structured with all the different topics. And we can try and put them in different categories. That, um, that seemed to have some support from, from council, um, but I, I don't want to.
Yeah, I wanted to jump in if I can. Um, if it's not indirectly, I guess, like, policy level that needs to be, um, discussed, then I don't know necessarily if there needs to be a meeting or agendized for us to talk about it versus it being more so of an email format of like information that needs to go out. I think there was a suggestion that someone made that there'd be like a weekly update of like arrests or something like that. And I think that information is very valuable to know. Um, but I don't know that we'd be making policy decisions based on that information at that time.
Yeah, I would just say that, um, any email communication has to be one-way. It has to be me telling council. It can't be amongst council members. Um, that would be a potential, a potential Brown Act violation. So, um, but, but, uh, so obviously it doesn't, it does, that doesn't lend itself to having a discussion because, you know, I can't have, if, it just makes it difficult that a question that maybe you may ask me can't necessarily disseminate, answer that and disseminate to everybody. Because it could, and then if there's another question, you know, there's just, it, it, it's hard to do that virtually. Um, it would be really useful, though, for us to get the types of information that council would like to know, uh, in if there's a weekly or bi-weekly, um, report, right? So, um,
To host a special meeting, you need three council members, correct?
You need three council members.
Could you circulate or ask everyone for their list and then circulate dates?
Yep.
And find if three are available?
Yeah. And ideally, we would want five, right? Because ideally, if this is a
Of course.
Yeah, this is a, a big, a big topic. So we'd like to have five. And, and I would also, just to kind of piggyback on, on, um, even, even if we have three councilmember support for the community academy, our goal is to have all five of you support it, right? Because I think it's a really big deal. Um, personally, I know the chief, you know, has expressed his, his support. So we want to make sure all councilmembers are comfortable and support it so that it's as successful as it can be, um, as opposed to, you know, maybe getting the minimum amount of support. I mean, this would be one that I think, um, and it sounds like every, all councilors are generally supportive. But if, if, if delaying it, you know, a few weeks, um, A, that'll give us more time to get, you know, get more participation. But if that means that we can get more council buy-in, I think that's, it's worth a few weeks to, to delay personally.
Would you confirm, even though you have majority support, to continue as you've planned, you're declining and wishing to delay it?
I would recommend that for us to be, I want it to be as successful as possible. So if we can get all five councilmembers to support it by, you know, waiting a couple of weeks, you know, two or three weeks before we start it, um, I, I think that would make for a more successful program than if, if there's, you know, only three councilmembers that support it and, and two that, that don't necessarily support it, um, right now, but with more information, maybe more supportive. I, I think personally, that's just, again, we want this to be successful, especially being the first one. And the more support we can get for it, the more successful it would be.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we, we should all be supportive of it. And, um, because we, if we are going to recommend it with anyone, but some of us are going to say, no, don't participate in that. It's, it's just doing this or that, you know, it's not benefiting anyone. But it should be something that we all support. And, uh, you know, the other thing is, I don't want it to be, uh, if we're going to have, also just going into the meetings, if we're going to have a meeting on this or a special meeting, um, I don't want it to be where it's something that we're micromanaging you. You know the policing. I know nothing about it. You know, and I trust that you, you, you know the, uh, the law and that you're going to apply it to the best of your ability. I don't have any reason to believe that you're not going to do that. And as well as Mr. Kimball, I think that you're working well together and bouncing things off of one another. Your decisions are not, uh, you know, made on your own. You confer and you confer and, and till you come up with something that's just what you feel is the right thing to do. So, um, that, you know, in terms of, I, I don't want to tell you how to do procedures or anything. I think you, you're presenting it. Maybe we'll see something that might glare out at us and we'll, when we can ask a question and you're saying, oh, yeah, you're right. But, um, not until I see what you present to us, will I know, you know, what other recommendations. I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with whatever that other councilmembers, uh, Fajardo and Montañez have requested. And we can address those.
And, um, I think that the recommendation by Councilmember Solario to actually send us back an email, if you can, is that what your recommendation was, that they would, you know, we'd send them a list of questions? They'd compile it, have answers in advance, so we can at least read in advance? So it kind of saves us time? Or did I misunderstand your recommendation?
Yeah, saving time.
I, I honestly think that that's a really good way to save time. Because if there, I don't know how many questions, uh, I don't know how many topics I read off, but if I read off twenty and Councilman Montañez read off ten, instead of hearing the answer for the first time ever on thirty different questions, having all of that in an email, I think that it would make the special session go a lot quicker. Um, and not that speed is the ultimate goal, but, you know, it correlates with efficiency. So, you know, the goal isn't to have a long meeting. The goal is to have an efficient meeting. And I understand where Councilmember Mendoza is coming from, that she doesn't want to micromanage. But there are a lot of concerns presented by the community that we all don't have the same answers to. And this is about us at least having an understanding. And we would be fooling ourselves if we said that the city has made all the right decisions when it's come to San Fernando Police Department. Even if you look at the fact of how low our numbers are, even if you just talk about hiring and nothing else, we remove everything else that I said and we just focus on hiring. I think a very objective person would say the city probably hasn't taken the right course of action in the last, you know, five years. And so the question isn't, you know, for us to cry over what was done in, you know, 2015, but, you know, what we can be doing now and, you know, to ensure that we're following best practices.
I, I'd just like to add that, um, you know, the chief is new and a lot of the things that have transpired, transpired prior to the chief being here. And, you know, he just, he came in and he's, you know, he's done with a lot of stuff that he has to address now. And that's not easy. You know, I, you know, I worked for many years and I, I under, I understand what his, his, not completely what it entails, but that's a big load on one person. And I think that we have to take that into consideration, that, that whatever has transpired was prior to the chief. You know, and then there was a point where Mr. Kimball was also the only, uh, he was the city manager, but without any, uh, um, not very many, uh, uh, directors. And he was doing, filling all those hats and wearing them all. And, and he did a great job. You know, we got out of bankruptcy when he was in place and, uh, when all that was occurring. And I think that, you know, I, I mean, just, I just want to say that not everything was created in, in, within five years.
And I've never meant to imply that he has, you know, that the problems that he inherited are, you know, are his cause. And that's why I wanted to, to issue that, that clarification, that it is not meant to diminish anything that he's done, but to really understand what is happening, given all the dramatics in the police department. And this was in place even before I was on the city council. I mean, there were, you know, multiple lawsuits, there was someone who we had to bring back, who was unlawfully terminated. There was a lot of drama that cost the city enormous amounts of money. And part of the reason, and I'm sure you can point to a number of reasons, but part of the reason is not having, you know, public discussion and transparency. And so, this is a one-time thing to, you know, make sure that we've turned the page and that we're all in communication. We all understand how the police department functions and that, you know, we're all working in tandem with one another. So, I would just ask, you know, to have your confidence on this issue that it's being handled correctly. And I, I do love the idea of emailing because that's going to save us at least an hour. And so, what I would like to put forward then as direction is to, is to ask, you know, is for council members to provide staff with any topics they would like discussed regarding police department as Mr. Kimball mentioned by this Friday. And for us to have a special meeting slash a study session on the last Monday of the month. And I don't know if I have to make a motion for that, but I'd love to have a motion just so we're all on the same page. And when we leave this meeting, it's like, well, I can't make that day, or, you know, a lot of things change. That would be my, my ultimate goal to have this discussion.
So, I think it's, it's up to council if we want to actually try to pick the date tonight. I know in the past and what we can do is either I can, you know, we can solicit, staff can solicit the days, give a few dates and availability and have everyone pick a date or say what they're available for. And then, and then obviously get topics and questions. So, that was the direction I was writing down, which was that staff would get the dates of availability in January for a special meeting from council members. And then also get topics for, in, in, any questions for the special meeting. That, that's what I had written down for direction.
And for this item, each council member provides direction, and I believe that, that captures what the majority direction is.
Right, okay. So, then just to clarify, it is to submit comments, chief, preferably by Friday. Or topics or questions, however we call it, questions that we would like answered, preferably by Friday. And that you will find out what date could work for a special meeting with the intent of it being sometime in January.
Yes, and to the extent that there's information that we can, we can respond to of the questions, provide that beforehand.
Yeah, by email.
We'll also do that. There are certain types of questions that if it's consensus building, we can...
I understand, and no one's asking that.
Actual questions and background material.
That will save us all an hour.
Yeah.
And I assure the council, this will not be a regular thing to do, but there will be, you know, tremendous support by the community just to understand, you know, how things are working. So, you know, I'd like to thank you all for being supportive of this. And, you know, I'd like to thank staff for at least pushing back the citizens academy and you know, potentially we'll have the full twenty-five seats filled and it'll be even more successful. And with, you know, five of us, you know, having, you know, subscribed to the notion that this is the right way to go forward. So, that concludes my item unless anyone else wanted to opine.
I just want to add, I, I like the idea of you emailing us to find out what days were available because I'm finding a vacation, but my husband doesn't know yet. Make sure you don't tell him. Yes.
So, now we know that your husband doesn't watch city council meetings.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Sorry, neither does mine. Now that you have sufficient direction, our next item on the agenda is item thirteen, but we have already addressed that with ladies on updates. So, how would you like to handle that?
No, I agendized this because I had a discussion with a former Councilmember Ballin, and she asked me to agendize it. I didn't know that she had relayed her interest to Councilmember Mendoza as well, and I didn't know that Councilmember Mendoza had related to you. And so, it was just agendized based off my discussion with her, but it is moot at this point. And so, we saved ourselves in another five or ten minutes. That concludes it.
So, we can just move on to staff comments?
Yes. Go ahead, staff communication.
So, I will start with the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Mayor Rodriguez and city council members, the city clerk's office does not have any updates unless you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Director Julian?
Okay, a couple of updates on December, excuse me. On January the tenth, the Park Wellness and Recreation Commission will meet at its regular time, six-thirty here in this chamber. We'll do a reorg and get the year started. Then on Saturday, November, excuse me, second last year. On Saturday, January fourteenth, there's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for the Lane Park construction project. It's going to be at ten AM at the park. We're going to have individuals talk and we'll have light refreshments. It begins at ten AM. Barring storm. If there's a storm, it's off. But if it's light, cool, we'll have it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick update. I, even though it was approved some seven months ago, I found out today through the grapevine that the city received a grant, a three-hundred thousand dollar grant for doing a citywide feasibility study for infiltration projects. It's something that we, we put forward, did a presentation to the county back in April. And like I said, it took a while to filter its way to me, but we'll, we'll be working on that. So, that is another area that we're looking to advance on some of our strategical, city council strategic goals. So, just wanted to brief you all on that. Thank you.
Good evening. Community Development does not have any update. Thank you.
Good evening. While we have passed December, it is yet the most wonderful time of the year for finance. We are continuing to welcome our business license community to continue their renewals. All of our business community members were mailed their registered business information. And so, the due date for SIT middle is the end of February or February twenty-eighth. We're also excited about the work that we've been doing with the swap meet. And we have extended their SIT middle date to February twenty-eighth to align with our business license renewals as well. We also continue to promote some of the state programs with regards to utility billing assistance. We do have some information on our website with regards to the low-income household water assistance program. There are funds available. In total, California has been allocated a hundred sixteen million dollars in one-time funding to provide LEWAP assistance. So, we continue to promote that within our community for those who need utility assistance. Thank you.
I was hoping that the city council this evening might adjourn in memory of the Riverside Deputy who was murdered last Thursday, the twenty-ninth of December. And briefly, to share with the council that on December twenty-ninth, Riverside County Sheriff's Deputy Isaac Cordero was murdered by a five-time felon who was out on the street and was stopped during a, a, an interaction, basically a traffic stop with a deputy. And that individual killed the sheriff's deputy who was thirty-two years old and proceeded to lead police officers on a chase. And again, I think it's very important that we take a moment and remember this deputy, but also take the opportunity to thank our police officers for the job that, that they do day in and day out and recognizing the inherent dangers that come along with the job. But also send our condolences to the family of the deputy who was, who was murdered and to the Riverside County Sheriff's Department as well.
Thank you, chief. And I just wanted to first, hope you all had a nice holiday season. I had a good couple of week, couple of week break. I want to congratulate everyone on a successful first meeting of the new year with the new council. So, it either only gets harder from here or only gets easier from here. I guess we'll find out. But, but I think we started the year and and I'm excited to see what we have going for twenty-twenty-three. I just want to remind everyone that there, a quarterly outlook report is in your, is in your email inbox right now. And that just kind of identifies some of the agenda items that we look, look forward to having over the next quarter. It also has a number of events that will be scheduled over the next three months as well as some attachments on CIP updates and grant updates, that type of thing. And I also am starting sort of to do, trying to do bi-weekly updates that are, that are more kind of just what, what's been transpiring in each department over the last, the prior two weeks. So, at the end of this week, you'll see my, my second bi-weekly update. And I plan to keep those, keep those up to make sure everyone's got, you know, information. You know, sometimes we all get, we all get caught in our little world and forget that we need to share that information with, with everyone. So, so look for that at the end of this week. And that concludes staff comments.
Thank you. Now, we'll have council updates and comments. Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes. First, I know that you're going to bring back the item on the financing for the HVAC. I think it would be helpful if you're comfortable doing so. Instead of Will Dan talking to the financier, if you're willing to talk to them and just let them know directly that, you know, the majority opinion was just to go all cash, but if they really have an extraordinary deal for us or we should get it financed, you know, you'd like to know what their best rate and term is. Maybe prefer all Dan doing that, but I figure, I feel that you know how to talk dollars and cents and money. And so, you, you can be a strong advocate. If they gave us an absurd offer to take their loans, that we use that money for streets or something, I'd love for them to, to give us an absurd offer, but maybe they won't change anything. Number, the second item is, I think that it's helpful if, and I don't want staff to spend too much time on this or, you know, attorney costs on it, but it's helpful just to have a printout sheet for public hearings. So, we're following the, you know, the, the same rules at each meeting. And actually, I had, I just remembered that not only was it so confusing, we actually clarified it in the procedural manual when I think it was updated in twenty-eighteen because no one can keep straight what we're supposed to do or not do. And then it's a question of did we do it right? Does it stand if someone challenges it? So, I think that just reviewing what we put in the procedural manual and making sure that that's the policy we want to put forward would be great so that it doesn't look like we don't know what we're doing. And with regards to special meetings in general, the last time that the council discussed this was in twenty-fifteen. So, I think that I'm the only OG council member from that time. But I do think that it is helpful to have those at five o'clock as opposed to starting them later. And again, I had just heard that this might be changed. I am not saying that they can't be changed. You know, any direction that we provided, especially seven years ago, doesn't necessarily hold today, but I would hope that we could actually, you know, if it's going to be changed from five to something else, I would like for us to have that as a brief city council discussion because it impacts all of our schedules potentially. I just think it's the fairest way, way, way to handle that. And lastly, I know that we spoke about a couple of parks today, but we left out a few others that I just wanted to make some brief notes on. Surprisingly, one of the biggest questions I got during the campaign was what the huge mound, mound of dirt is for at Recreation Park. And I know what it's for, you know, it's for the rainwater capture program, you know, as I colloquially call it and explain it to people. But I think that, I know that we had, there was information in the sun, there was information on our social media. But if we just had like a little banner there or a little stand so people have an idea of what that dirt is for, I literally had like forty-something people ask me. People have no clue what that mound of dirt is for. I think that that would be helpful. And I just remembered that there was one person who asked me to advocate for something on Lane Park. And she's the only person whose information I think I lost when I was door knocking. And she said that because of the location of where the bathrooms are, people will always illegally park behind those little apartment buildings on Second Street. And as a result, they block her car. And she's had a dozen experiences where she cannot go to work because people will park to use those bathrooms. And if there's some way to, and I wish I had her number, which unit it is, there's only like ten units in this little complex, I could just knock on every door. But if there's some way to, to mitigate that so that her parking is not blocked and she doesn't miss work. She also has a member of her family who has special needs, and that doesn't mean that she should be getting any special attention, but it also, when they have to leave, it just makes things more challenging. And it is a, you know, a semi-regular occurrence in the time that she's lived there. And lastly, when we talk about parks, as I call it, a street park, there has been a lot of concern from community members on our continued efforts to keep it clean, to keep the graffiti out, to keep it secure. And there are a number of residents in that little cul-de-sac on McNeil who want to meet with city management to make sure that there's a plan on that. And so, these aren't items that we have to, to address this minute. But in case I forget them, I just wanted to say them now so that they are out in the universe. And that concludes my comments.
Councilmember Montanias?
Okay, thank you, everybody. I thought today was a great start to twenty-twenty-three where we focused in on, you know, the basics that matter the most to our community on public safety, the streets, you know, the parks. You know, making sure that we're continuing to be financially smart about how we're going to do things. I look forward to, you know, really focusing more on economic development this year so that we could, you know, strengthen our revenues and continue to be able to do this kind of work that we're doing. So, I very much enjoyed our conversations, the back and forth, the, the focus and the desire really to be, to be the best that we, that we can be as a city and provide the greatest services possible. So, I think we, you know, I thank everybody for the work that you're doing. And we set a really good tone for twenty-twenty-three, and I hope we continue to stay at this level. And then congratulations, you know, Madam Mayor for doing your first meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Solorio?
Wow, that was a great first meeting for me. I want to say thank you so much to our staff slash team. You all display such a wonderful form of leadership for me especially. And in this meeting, I learned a lot. So, I thank you all. Also, to the council, you have definitely taught me a lot in this meeting and very informative. So, I look forward to my next four years. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Yes, I agree. Great first meeting. You know, I did, one thing, I don't have any comments or updates, but just a comment that I did attend the dinner launch ribbon cutting ceremony at Heavenly Pancake, which was a really nice event. They're now serving dinner Thursday, Friday, and Saturday with drinks for those that want. But they will also bring out their morning, their regular menu at the same time. They have a special menu with sushi and fish that it's really nice, very good. I recommend everyone go. So, anyway, I just hope everyone had happy holidays, wish everyone a happy new year and many, you know, good health and peace and love in your, in your lives. So, thank you all for your support.
Happy, happy new year. Thank you again to staff and the commissioners that contributed to all the things that we've moved forward this evening. Not that you haven't been here long enough, but I did want to recap the accomplishments this evening really quickly. Something that passed on consent, which we didn't discuss, but was incredibly important is that we're now soliciting, we will now solicit donations for our student scholarship program, which is incredibly exciting. We discussed ways to implement state law for zoning, which maintains the character of our community. So, thank you, Kanika, for leading that discussion. It's been thirty years plus, but we finally are going to have a new HVAC system at PD for the well-being of our city facilities and our staff. We've moved forward to have more miles of street resurfacing, and we are not done, Matt. I'm especially proud that we've moved forward with these contracts to have community engagement for the Las Palmas Revitalization Project. We're here to represent our community in all these different ways that we allow them to provide feedback to us, make us better at our jobs. So, thank you. I also want to thank everyone on council for your attention and your respectful and thoughtful deliberation this evening. I also want to thank everyone for your guidance for facilitating my first meeting. Shout out to Mr. Padilla and to our Deputy City Clerk. I appreciate you. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize everyone, all the community members and police officers and business owners and colleagues and staff who have... who have reached out with your love and support for me taking on this new role as mayor. Your well wishes and commitment to be in my corner as I take on this new role has been completely overwhelming, and I am just so grateful. I also want to thank all of the community groups that hosted different holiday occasions in our community to celebrate all the work they do all year and do even more. It was so amazing to be in community with you all. And I would like to also end with a plug for Heavenly Pancakes. I facilitated their ribbon-cutting event and the Vice Mayor Mendoza joined me. We were there to celebrate their new dinner service, and I can also attest that it is delicious, and I hope you all take some time to go and support a local small business. With that, there are no further items on the agenda, so per the chief, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Deputy Isaiah Cordero. This meeting's adjourned.